Morning, everybody.
Can I come in, Mary Ann?
Good morning.
Morning, thank you. Looks like for some reason my camera connecting. Taking a look at our attendees. Looking pretty good. Too many things on my screen. We'll go ahead and get started. And we'll do our welcome and call to order. Today's presentations are going to be mostly focusing on reporting requirements. And since it's also kind of that time of the year, I'm sure everyone has been doing some reporting as we get into the last quarter and towards the end of the fiscal year. So I just thought for our check-in question, what is a story of impact, whether that's like a set of data points or some qualitative information that you recently were included in a report back to a state partner? Or what is the story of impact that you wish that state partner had asked for in their report, but it's not quite fitting into their current reporting? Just want to hear some good stories today, I think. And I know we also have some funders in the room. So if you don't have someone you're reporting to, but you would like to share a story that you've received recently, also would love to hear that. Um, okay, so let's go ahead and start. And I'm gonna start with, I guess I should start with myself. I'm Ohio. I'm checking in here. And I think the story I recently put into a report back to the OHA was an intergenerational event we did where we we have these separate leadership programs, but with the support of some funding, we've gotten through public health, we did this great energy intergenerational mental, mental health healing event where we brought together our youth leadership program and our adult leadership program to do a healing circle and an art activity together. And it was just absolutely beautiful. And we had tried to do this once before, just kind of like ad hoc. And we were only really able to bring like a couple of youth in, but with the extra support in this public health grant, we were actually able to bring 15 adults and eight youth together for this event. And it was really beautiful to see these young people who are thinking about, you know, they're in high school and they're thinking about college and they're thinking about their next steps and getting to meet people who have degrees and careers in the places that they're interested in and everyone sharing identity around being Latinos in the in Oregon. And it was really fun. And I liked it a lot. All right. So that's my story of impact that I'm glad my state partner asked for in our, in our reporting. And I'll call on Don Ash.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Let's see, I'll, I'll break the rules a little bit. And this is quasi-state, but recently United Way of the Columbia will administer $10 million in grants to support 61 housing and homeless service providers that are on the front lines of trying to address the housing crisis in the greater metro area. These grants were used to support workforce recruitment and retention. And we administered the $10 million within 11 weeks of signing the contract. So we created a very nimble system that was easily used for disbursement of a significant number of funds and to support community-based groups. So this has implications at state-wide level as well, though it was mostly focused on the metro area.
Thank you.
Want me to pass it?
I know, I'll go through our list so I can check off attendance. Yeah. Felicia.
Good morning, everyone. Felicia Montblanco. And so the first thing I thought of is I have the absolute honor of doing our comms work at my organization and I get to celebrate the stories of our grantees. And we have a program called the Justice Reinvestment Equity Program, which happens to be state dollars that that we give out as a foundation. And I've gotten to sit down with these grantees and hear qualitative stories about their work. And just as an example, Mono a Mono in Salem, who is working with incarcerated youth that are impacted by the carceral system, whether that be they themselves or their families. And the Oregon Washington Health Network, which is in eastern Oregon, working with members of the community that are often considered disposable. And it is a profound privilege to get to learn from their work and make sure that other people know about their work. So that's, that's a big perk of working in philanthropy that I absolutely love. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Let's go with Bettina. Are you with us today?
Yeah, Bettina Schimpf from Old Mill Center. And I recently was in meeting with the Oregon Health Authority and we were talking about the incentive measures about early childhood screening. And, you know, in pediatric offices, but also in the early childhood, early development world. And I was able to share some stories how you have to be creative about knowing why people are not showing up. And, you know, a story of a parent we worked with with a three-year-old who wasn't showing up to head start. And, you know, when we investigated what was happening, we found out that this parent also had a 14-year-old with very serious health issues, wheelchair-bound, disabled. And getting their child not to class was not a failing. It was just when nights had been really hard with a 14-year-old, there was just, and the support workers in the home, the mom just couldn't do it because that 14-year-old needed ongoing support. And some, so sometimes the complexities of this work are that you have to find out what's really happening in the family to help them effectively and not blame a parent when you really don't know what the home circumstances are. So we were able to to share that at the Oregon Health Authority, just to really say this measure is complex and the results have to be family driven to really understand what the barriers are. Because when you don't ask, you just make it not as complex as it really is.
Thank you, Bettina. I think that's a great example of how like sometimes our reporting, right? It's just like through a pinhole. And we don't always get to see the full picture. Thank you for that. Mary Ann.
Good morning. I'm Mary Ann Schleis from St. Vincent de Paul in Eugene, Oregon. I've worked there since 2010. Recently, we've been putting more effort. We run low-barrier shelters for literally homeless adults. And we also have one for households with families and children. We've really been focusing on case management and engaging with people. So somebody might say, we'll say, what, what did you do today? Well, I took a shower and I did my laundry and I had some meals. And then we can break up, wake up and then say, and was that enough for you? Is there more that you would like? Can we help you look at some other things that you might like to go after? And then we have some flexible funds from the city and some diversion funds from the county that we can actually get people into housing. And then we also have a second chance renters education, which we have a list of landlords that will take people that have evictions or poor credit. Once they go through this 10-week course, they can access those landlords, even if they have those bad hits against their record. And so those are the kinds of things we're trying to do to get literally homeless people into housing. And we've been very successful lately. We got a new Director of Homeless and Emergency Management. His background is in substance use with Buckley and shelter care, and then also with behavioral health. And so he's really putting a big effort that everybody that serves the program engages and talks with people. And instead of giving them a one-month bus pass, we're going to give them daily bus passes so they can come back and tell us how that went. So those kinds of things, just trying to help people engage and connect with other human beings.
Thank you. Leah, are you here today? Okay, what about Helen? Are you with us today, Helen?
Hi, yes, Helen Wong. I'm coming from a slightly different lens, since I don't have, not currently funded, but state. But as a funder, one of the most fulfilling stories of impact I get to see is when an organization actually tells us that we're the first people to fund them, not because we want to be the first, but it's because we're actually reaching new groups, often groups that may be deemed too, you know, high-risk or too small for other funders. And I think that we talk about impact, it's easy to want to see, you know, big things. But when we're talking about groups that have historically or in communities that have historically not really been reached, it's always really gratifying for me to know that we are, you know, working in partnership with a community that maybe we haven't had a relationship with before.
Beautiful. Thank you. Debbie.
Good morning. My name is Debbie Dennis. I'm the Deputy Director at DAS. We're, we are not the funder and we are not the recipient at DAS of funds. I'm very much enjoying hearing all of your stories of impact. They're just also meaningful. I've been trying to think of a correlation in the work we do at DAS. We support other state agencies so that they can be partners in many ways to the community. This is Public Service Employee Recognition Month. And so the month of May, we spend a lot of time identifying our employees within public service who really stand out and go above and beyond. So we had the honor at DAS to nominate three people as ambassadors, one out of our IT group who supports state agencies and their IT needs, one out of our finance group who has mentored many, many financial folks throughout state government, and another one out of our communications group. So their impact on state government has been amazing in customer service and operational excellence. And so that's the story I'll share today.
Thank you. Lovely. Heather, are you with us today? Heather or Jonathan? Jonathan, are you with us?
This is Kristin Galino, and I think that John was covering for me while I was out on parental leave. And I am here today. I'm just recently back from leave and I am in a similar position to our DAS folks where I, I do not report. And I actually don't even do the grant work anymore. I manage the attorneys that do the grant work. So I'm, I don't have a to say today, but I'm really happy to be back. And it's wonderful to hear all of your stories of impact. Thank you, everyone, for the work that you're doing.
Thank you for coming back. Good to see you again. Tamara.
My turn because I just took a bite of trail mix. Good morning, everyone. You know, I haven't had to do as many reports most recently as I'm used to in my professional career. So I thought of, because of the time of year, tomorrow's our youth and elders honoring ceremony, where we honor all of our elders and then any youth that has any connection to education. So whether that's an eighth grader, a second grader, early head start, everybody gets honored and says their name and their tribe and something they like about school. And we told that story when we were working with, we, and we still are working with the Youth Development Division to, on the re-engagement program, so GEDs mostly, but also getting youth back on track to get their high school diploma, if that's a better fit for them. And we're really trying to de-stigmatize the GED, right? It's not the same GED that maybe our parents or generationally that existed. Same opportunities exist if you get the GED. And so we've been able to share over the years, youth and elders honoring being an opportunity now to really, you know, help push that message and share that a GED is a great success and a really good path for some people. So our youth and elders is tomorrow. And this year, we're going to get to share, we're really excited about this. We're going to get to share in our reporting with YDD that we're actually combining our high school graduation with a GED graduation as well this year. I thought I'd share that.
Beautiful. Thank you. Katrina. I think I saw Katrina's note taker in the meeting. Maybe we don't have Katrina just yet. Andre.
Good morning, Andre Beeler. Excuse me, dealing with allergies. I am Director of Equity and Racial Justice in the Governor's Office and in a similar boat to my friends over at DAS. But to just kind of share a tidbit from my previous life, managed a workforce development program in which we funded some community-based organizations. And I think the, one of the most impactful parts was, you know, not collecting just like the demographic data or, you know, even the numbers on, you know, which folks you've had a touch point with that have like either received supportive services or have decided to enter into, you know, a trade development program. Well, the story is about how folks got connected. And I'll just share one, which was, there was a lady who her son was actually being outreach to about working the trades. And there was an individual there and was going off on his spiel about how great these careers were and the opportunities that you could have as a individual working in the trades. And she found it so captivating that she actually entered into the trades after, you know, 20-plus years in the service industry. And to this day, touted as one of the most life-changing experiences, you know, that she's ever had. So, you know, you never know who's listening, I guess, is, is one of the takeaways from that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Senator Campos, are you with us today? Representative Conrad, are you with us today?
Good morning. Yeah, I am. And appreciate all, hearing all the stories. I don't have one to share, so, but I did appreciate listening to all of them.
Thank you so much. And then I'll do one last call for Leah and Heather. Maybe they've arrived since I last called them. Leah or Heather? Okay. Do we have anybody? Thank you, everybody, for the check-in today and for getting us in the mood for reporting to chat. Do we have anybody here for public comment today? I think you can use the raise hand function if you would like to be called on. Okay, not seeing anything or hearing anything. And just a quick set of announcements before we jump into our presentations for today. This will be our final round of department presentations. Through July and August, we're going to be moving into our decision-making mode. We're going to be writing and finalizing our recommendations using all this information that we have gathered. Any additional presentations or information sharing that we will have will be really focused on moving us towards recommendations. So if we hit a point where we're like, we would really like to hear from, you know, this person or this body, or get some additional information on this or that report. You know, we really want to focus that additional information on helping us get to the finish line on our presentations. And we'll talk a little bit more about that at the end of the meeting when we jump into our look ahead. And then so our agenda for today, we'll do our presentations, we'll take a break. We'll have DOJ do a presentation. And I also want to make sure to clarify that DOJ's presentation today is just about their work in the portion of the grant and contracting processes. So we had submitted a bunch of other questions to them. So this is not going to be a presentation addressing all of the questions that we have submitted. It's just going to be a presentation about kind of like their structural positioning in the process of reviewing grants and contracts. It's just going to be a presentation about kind of like their structural positioning in the process of reviewing grants and contracts. And with that, I think I'll pull down my slides. And then I think first on our agenda is going to be DAS.
Good morning, do you want me to share or Amy, did you want to share, which would you prefer? I can share my screen if that works. I'll just go ahead and share my screen. Oh, I don't want to show the whole screen though. Oh, maybe I can't because it won't let me do, I choose just a, oh, maybe, nope, not that one either, sorry. Maybe I'll make it, change this out a little bit. So you can see. All right, we'll do it that way. All right, everybody see the screen there, oops. Looks good. All right, so good morning, my name is Rhonda Nelson and I'm the Capital Finance Manager here at DAS. I oversee multiple state bond programs, including the lottery revenue bonds. I also have with me today Stephanie Tyre, who is the COVID Fiscal Relief Manager and oversees the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA program. Hopefully between the two of us, we will be able to answer any questions that you have today related to the reporting requirements of our grant contract. So for the question, how do we determine reporting requirements for our grant agreement and contracts? For our lottery bond grant program, reporting requirements are determined by federal regulations and only include information that is needed for tax compliance purposes or in case of a federal audit. The ARPA grant reporting requirements are mostly set by the federal sponsor, but we conduct a grant risk assessment that may also identify additional monitoring needs which could impact report requirement. The general fund grant reporting requirements are based on the amount of funding and the complexity of the project. Continuing on through the determination of reporting requirements in our grant agreements, we do not have any administrative rules or statutes that define or impose reporting requirements for any of our grant programs. As for how legislation imposes reporting requirements, for the lottery bonds, there have been no reporting requirements that in legislation to date. For the ARPA and general fund grants, legislation might dictate some of the reporting requirements just depending on the project and what the bill language sets. The next question is how federal guidelines impose reporting requirements. And as discussed just a minute ago, the lottery bond grant reporting is all based on federal requirements. The ARPA and other federal grants that we have, we pass through federal requirements by citing them in the grant agreement. We include specific requirements from our federal program as well as citing applicable federal uniform grant guidance. So let's talk now about whether the grantee can negotiate on some of those reporting requirements. For the lottery bond grants, there is, really is no room for negotiation as there, we only require the information that we have required to collect for federal regulations. For the ARPA grants, there's a little bit of room for negotiation due to federal grant reporting requirements that are passed through to the grantees. For example, a contractor who would be different as they aren't carrying out part of the federal award. So their reporting requirement can be negotiated to satisfy what the completion of the work should look like. For general fund grants, they may have some room for negotiation for the reporting requirements. It just depends on what the guidelines are that were included in legislation. So continuing to talk about the negotiations of the reporting requirements and how they may be tailored to the capacity of the grantee. For lottery bond grants, the reporting requirements are not tailored to the grantee, they are the same and consistent across all agreements. For ARPA grants, reporting requirements are tailored based on the type of entity being granted funds for specific areas of requirements. For example, a nonprofit versus a government entity, the government entities have a different type of insurance and so we would have to modify their grant agreement to, to account for this. The general fund grants reporting requirements are based on the size and the complexity of the grant. Let's discuss now how the reporting requirements may be tailored based on the amount of funding allocated to the grant. For lottery bond grants, again, the reporting requirements do not change based on the amount of funding, they're consistent across all of our agreements. For the ARPA grants, the risk assessments that we do, do consider the size of the award as one of the areas of risk. So it can play a part in determining the reporting requirements. For our general fund grants, reporting requirements are based on the size and complexity of the grant, so they vary. So how often do we require audits of the grantees? For ARPA and similar federal grants, we follow the Uniform Grant Guidance in which a grantee is required to perform a single audit if they spend more than 750,000 of federal funding in one fiscal year. There is currently a proposal by the Office of Management Budget to increase that limit to a million in the future, as just some added information. For the lottery bond and general fund grants, we generally do not require any audit. So how do we help grantees with the administrative burden of reporting while still ensuring compliance? So for all of our grants, we work really hard to keep the reporting requirements as simple and as straightforward as possible to minimize the burden. For any grants that use federal funding, however, there will be additional federal reporting requirements that must be completed. But we try to minimize what we can. And what types of tools and training do we offer to the grantees to help? For the lottery bond and general fund grants, we don't have any specific training or templates, but we do offer assistance and conduct outreach on an as-needed basis for those who are, need any help. But ours are, it's a pretty minimal amount of reporting that we request for. For the ARPA grants, we have information and tools available on our ARPA website. Some of those tools include like a template, office hour sessions, email and verbal communications when there are changes with the US Treasury or as needed with grantee. The grant agreement includes specific reporting expectations and grant management requirements as well. So let's talk about what we do with the data that is collected from the grantees. For ARPA and similar federal grants, the type of data and what it's used for can be different based on who the federal sponsor is, who the grantee is, and what the grant requirements are. For ARPA grants, some ARPA grants have different requirements depending on the type of expenditure category. So some categories only require financial data while other categories require the qualitative, quantitative and financial data. Audit data is typically used for sub-recipient monitoring, which is required by the Uniform Grant Guidance for federal grants. And we also use qualitative data in sub-recipient monitoring as well. For the lottery bond grants, the information that's collected, which is mostly financial data, is maintained for federal tax compliance purposes only and, and in case of a future federal audit as well. For general fund grants, the information collected is used for internal review processes only and don't, doesn't go outside of us. So continuing on with what the, what we do with the data that's collected in regards to a public dashboards. The ARPA grants do have a public dashboards, which is what you see here, a little snippet of it. With, it includes the status of a subset of the grants so that legislators can check the progress of their projects quarterly. There are no dashboards, however, for the lottery bond or the general fund grants. And as mentioned previously, we try to reduce the administrative burden on the grantees by only collecting the information that is needed to meet the program requirements. And the data that is collected is reviewed, but there is no internal analysis done beyond that. And that's it for, related to our grant reporting requirements. If you have any questions, we can take that at this time.
Thank you, so I think we have time for maybe one or two questions. I did put one in the chat and I'm going to ask you to like answer that off the top of your head. But you use the phrase depending on size and complexity a number of times and I don't really understand what that's implying. So if you could follow up in, in writing with maybe three examples of like small, medium, large, low complexity, medium, high complexity, just so that, I think we can kind of get a sense of what that phrase means. Felicia, go ahead.
Thanks, I would, thanks for the presentation. Maybe this was covered at some point, but I don't understand what a grant risk assessment is. Can you talk about that a little bit?
I think that will be Stephanie that will be talking.
There she is.
Hi, Stephanie Tyre, I'm the COVID Fiscal Relief Manager for DAS. To answer that question, it is part of the procurement process for grants and contracts under the DAS procurement rules. And so the risk assessment is to establish insurance needs for the grant, in particular related to professional services. If they're going to be building something, there's, there's pollution requirements for insurance, that kind of thing. So the risk assessment helps us determine what kind of insurance we would need to be required for the grant as well as determining, you know, if we have a new grantee, which we did a lot for the COVID Fiscal Relief Funds. We had a lot of new grantees that had never received federal funding before. And so that increases the risk because they're not aware of a lot of the federal requirements around uniform grant guidance. So it also tells us how much my team needs to be involved with helping them manage their grant, giving them information, providing technical assistance, that kind of thing. So the risk assessment really gives us a picture on paper as much as you can for grantees and how we need to assist these grantees to be successful in delivering the product or the services that was listed in the legislation for the COVID money. This is a standardized process for grants across the enterprise. And so when I was at ODE, we did the same thing. So it really is pretty much a standardized process, but it's usually done behind the scenes. We communicate with the grantee, they fill out some of the information, then we make the assessment and then score the risk assessment. And then that tells us what kind of monitoring we need to do. Maybe, you know, with a, with a city or a government that's dealt with federal funds, we don't have to monitor as much, we don't have to ask as many questions, not as much technical assistance. So that's really what the risk assessment does.
Thanks.
As a follow-up to that, how do you, how do you communicate that back to the grantee? Or do they just not know that you've decided they're high risk?
No, we do communicate 100% with the grantee and we share with them the reasons why, right? Like if they're a low, medium or high risk, we explain, you know, what, what led us to that conclusion and then communicate the requirements of the monitoring with the grantee, so they are fully aware.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions? Department of Early Learning and Care, you're up, thank you so much, DAS.
Thank you, and I'm just going to personally put on a side in there that it was really good to see Stephanie and Rhonda because I have worked with both through education over the years. So it's really good to see both of you. So thank you for having us, Department of Early Learning and Care, I'm just working on my share screen right now. Regarding requirements, reporting requirements. Just one more thing I need here. And I just, there, sorry, things got moved. So thank you for having us. In order to start with the determination of reporting requirements, how we determine what reporting requirements will be included in grant agreements or contracts. We use the OARS and ORSs to pull information so that we pull reporting for demonstration of requirements. So the requirements of the grant, do you demonstrating that you are completing those requirements? For some of our programs, there's a program quality element that we also are monitoring for. And then to monitor funding use, allowable uses of funding as well as, to the reverse, how funding's being used for our own learning, how are our grantees using the funds to, to achieve these outcomes? The three main, or the three ORSs I pulled for this, we have a biennial report that includes the evaluation of DUC programs. So in preparation for that report, over the biennium, we pull a lot of information from our grantees through their quarterly and monthly reporting. Preschool Promise also has its own biennial report, as does Oregon Predatal to Kindergarten. The, sorry, the legislative impact of requirements has much more to do with the language of the legislation that we use to help frame reporting requirements. There are rarely specific, except for these required reports, there are rarely specific pieces of information in there that say grantees must report. It is more on us evaluating legislation to see what reporting we're going to need to comply with the legislation. It's very similar with our federal guidelines, we have the CFR 200, which we use for a lot of our financial reporting. And then some of our specific awards that we might receive will have its own reporting tied to it. So besides what we get for CCDF, Child Care Development Fund, we also receive some other title dollars that have specific programmatic outcomes and requirements behind the reporting for those. So the adjustment of reporting requirements, if, trying to get to something here, so I apologize, I'm having a little bit of a document issues here. So changes to reporting are often made if there's a legislative change required. But typically, reporting practices are being refined to support high-quality data collection. We include grantee or contractor feedback when we go across biennia to determine reporting. And then during COVID, we had urgent information we needed to get in order to get money out the door to the right people and then report back to the feds on, on the uses of that funding. And I'm sorry, my documents are not behaving today. So, program managers periodically seek input from the network of their grantees on challenges, barriers and successes on the, for the grantee. For the grantee, sorry, now I'm skipping. This is going to be a rough day for me, I thank you all for your patience. I normally do not have a lot of these kinds of challenges. Okay. So our, our reporting requirements are tailored to the needs of the grantee or contractor based on feedback from the grantees and contractors. But we don't specifically do direct negotiation and tailoring from grantee to grantee within a program. But the program itself may make some adjustments as we learn more about what information is valuable for our, for our programs. An example of tailoring to capacity though, might be our coordinated enrollment grant. Some of our hubs indicated that they did not have the capacity to submit all the reports. So we went through all of the hub reporting and across the board for all the hubs, we removed or shortened some reporting to keep, keep that to what they were actually able to gather for us data-wise. We also don't currently have practices in place that tailor report requirements based on the amount of funding. Our audit requirements are typically, we are, boy, we're having fun. Typically, our audit requirements have to do with annual audit reports for nonprofit organizations. Rather than doing a lot of reviewing of the audits that are provided to us or doing what would be considered a formal audit, we do, we do monitor expenditure reports and our federally funded programs go through a biennial audit process so that we can report to the feds on how our, how our federal dollars are being spent. An example of how we do our monthly reporting requirements or monthly monitoring requirements would be the review of expenditure reports. The looking of expenditure, monthly expenditure reports across the lifetime of a grant agreement to look for patterns and question patterns and learn from our grantees about why maybe some expenditure and learn from our grantees about why maybe some expenditure, such as salaries, might suddenly jump over a time period. Did we have hiring? It's really more about telling the story of the grantee rather than going in and looking at every receipt currently, with the exception of some of our federal monitoring. We are looking at updating our monitoring across our grants as we build in our new awards management system, and we'll talk a little more about that in a minute. So recommendations to right-size our reporting requirements. The more we're working to align language so that similar questions can be asked of organizations across our grants, the more we'll be able to streamline. We are in the process of building out the next phase of our awards management system, which is going to include a great deal of the reporting requirements. We have determined that the ability of that system to, to help us sit down and say, what is OPK doing that is the same as preschool promise, so that we can try to get more reporting at an organization level rather than at the grant, at a grant award level, will help streamline a lot of those reporting processes. The work to do that, however, is not something that comes easily. It's going to require both internal and external work to align terminology across agents, or across organizations and across our own internal grants, and working to pull repetitive pieces of data out. We're also working to centralize a great deal of our data collection, both within our awards management system and creating our data warehouse where we're going to be able to pull information from various sources together so that we can pull reporting. We really want this to be done thoughtfully because we don't want to find ourselves in a place where we're starting all over and asking the same question in different ways all over again because we don't see the data the way we think we should see it. I wish I had one of my data people here to speak better to that than I can, but we also believe that when we centralize our data collection, we're going to increase the quality of the data that we receive and reduce the unavoidable currently repetitive reporting that we have because our reports are done in such a variety of ways. Some of you might know that you turn in a spreadsheet with reporting data, and then for a different grant, you might submit it online through Smartsheet or some other portal. With the, with the awards management system, we're working to put it all in one place. So the tools, training, and templates that we offer to grantees or contractors to help clarify expectations, we have how-to guides for our more complex reporting, for them, for our, for our, for any impactful reports where we're trying to gather stories. We frequently will have open sessions where people can, where people will talk about, this is what we're looking for. We also put out advanced copies of our reporting requirements, not just in the, in the grant where we list out deliverables and due dates, but templates of those particular reports so that organizations have time to look them over. There are periodically times when we have to bring a report out quickly because we learned that there's some data we need. And we're really grateful to the programs we work with that they understand when we suddenly say, hey, we need to get this from you because we're having a data ask. However, we're hopeful that as we're combing through the data we've collected over the last decade, we're going to start to see even more trends in what's been, what's been collected as last-minute requests and start to pool that within our data. Our awards management system is an example of an area where for fiscal reporting, we currently offer video instruction, written instructions, job aids with pictures, and one-on-one support in multiple languages. We do this using Teams and we primarily are able to meet directly with grantees during open office hours that are established and our award system coordinator keeps a, keep, keeps her, meet me, thank you, meet me, link in her email so that folks can just schedule time with her without having to email her first and do the back and forth. We often collect additional information on some of our reports. Oh, sorry, I skipped. What do we do with the data? We currently have two dashboards, one for our licensing data and one for our employment-related daycare data. We will be providing more dashboards as we grow the awards management system and put more data into our data warehouse and actually start to be able to pull reports out of that. And I will put the link for those dashboards in the chat here in just a moment. As far as what we collect, we often collect additional information that go beyond what's required, but it's necessary to understand unique program contexts and capture details related to programs. This data provides insight, it's, it provides the advantages and challenges associated with the program and it helps us support continuous quality improvement. We also provide many opportunities for open-ended feedback to help us learn additional things that maybe we're not asking the right question, and we'll get to here. Our internal, our internal analysis... Our internal analysis of the data is, we use qualitative and quantitative data to describe the characteristics of our grantees and families through the programs. We monitor the programs in meeting grant requirements. We're understanding the characteristics. We also use it for reports to legislature and informed decision-making. There's a lot of analysis of our data that happens, both our fiscal data and our qualitative data. And this is being done both across the fiscal offices, the programmatic offices, and, and with our legislative team. I'm gonna stop here for a minute and make an apology because I wouldn't normally say this. I was up at 2:45 on a family matter, so I'm a little scattered today and I want to apologize to everyone for that. But that does complete, complete my scattered report here today. I would be happy to take on any questions either with written responses later or right now. Thank you all for your patience.
And thank you so much, Teresa, for still being here with us today, even through managing things. So I appreciate you very much. I think we have time for maybe one or two questions. I'm gonna put one in the chat for writing, which was just the continuous quality improvement. Are you, I'll put the question in the chat, like I said, is that to improve your internal systems or is that looking for community, improving community-facing work? Like, oh, we noticed people asked for support three times before we offer it, let's try to get it to the first time? Or is it like, we see a slowdown in our reporting here or we see data collection misaligned there and then we're using the CQI there? And so if you, so I'll put that in the chat for just some response there, but go ahead.
And the quick answer is both, because we know that we, we are, we are building new, new systems. So for us, it is, we have to learn how we can do better and that will then lend it to getting the better data from our grantees and contractors so that we can help the programs be better. So it is, it's absolutely both. We don't look at it as, as one thing. And even better data, I mean, I could just expand that.
Thank you. All right, Felicia, go ahead.
Great job. Thank you so much for being here. I'm sorry that things are, things didn't go smoothly. You always have the best slides because they're so cute. So kudos to you. This might be Make More Sense written, I'm totally open, but I'm curious about the awards management system because I'm, I'm kind of going back to previous sessions where we've heard some agencies talk about like, oh, we use Excel, oh, we use, I want to say like Survey Monkey Plus or something. And so I'm really curious like how this is working for you guys in terms of like efficiency and reporting, because I imagine in our recommendations, which will probably be very long, there might be something about a program like this for every one, because I don't, I don't think others have this program, right?
Others do. We're not the only agency that actually uses even this particular program. But we are still in the process of building ours out because we were becoming a new agency. We had to start with the financial management piece because we were losing a core, a core way to financially manage payments to grantees when we, when we split from ODE. So we had to really compact the timeline to get that part of the system up and running so that we could have it by July 1. The rest of it, the reporting, the bigger, the bigger management of grantees picture is what we're building right now and are planning to launch for the 2527 biennium. So grantees will start to see that side of it as we're getting them ready for the next biennium by asking for, I'm saying application, but it's not application as in an RFA where they're competing, but to read, to send in their, their confirmation application for the next biennium for continuing grants that will continue across the biennium. So they'll start to see that part of the system late winter, early spring of '25. We'll also be rolling out a lot of training in advance. We do a lot of open office hours when we add features and do additional things. But I would say Department of Justice uses it, uses the same system, and we actually keep going back and looking at what they've done to help us not recreate things that we don't need to. We weren't aware of it when we purchased it, but we're really grateful for the partnership they've offered.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you so much, Dass, for the presentation. We really appreciate you being here today. And next up, we have Human Services.
Good morning. My name is Kirk Rhodes and I'm the administrator for the Shared Services Office of Contracts and Procurement, which is a shared services between the Oregon Department of Human Services and Oregon Health Authority. And bear with me as I pull up my slideshow. And it was very encouraging and humbling to hear the stories from the task force members this morning. Great work. Here we go. Okay, can everyone see that? Good. Okay, so to start off, we were looking at the, really, the balance between, do the reporting requirements balance with, you know, the risk of the agreement, whether it be a grant or contract, and the, you know, potentially the capacity of some of our vendors to actually, to engage with it in a timely way. So the first question is, how do we, how do you determine what reporting requirements will be included in a grant agreement or contract? For the grants, these really come from, and most of our grants, 99% of our grants are federal, so they would come from the notice of grant award. So when we're talking about reporting requirements, you know, that typically is 2 CFR 200. And that would, whatever, whatever grant from whichever organization is coming from is going to have some, there's going to be some uniqueness, but there will be a commonality in many common denominators with 2 CFR 200. On the state, we, very few of those, some of those on the OHA side, a few on, on the ODHS side, they'll be determined by our programs. We have several hundred programs. So the way things work in, in our office is our program staff really, you know, go through the process of applying through the LFO and legislature for grants. If they're approved, they come back to the organization and there's a process of planning that takes place. Our office really just works with the programs to develop the agreements and, and keep it on track with regards to, you know, whether we're doing RFGA or RFA, whatever the solicitation, if there's a solicitation is used, we'll keep a kind of oversight of that until it's executed. And then once it's executed, it's administered from the program level. So, and we have, within our agencies, we've got about 500 contract administrators around Oregon in every, virtually every county. ODHS is really decentralized in that we've got our offices, our branches, our 16 child welfare districts, self-sufficiency districts, and then the other programs are located throughout the state as well. So very decentralized operation there. OHA is more centralized, but any, anyway, just a little bit about the, kind of the topography of our organizations, 14,500 state employees. Explain how legislation on B, we didn't, we didn't really come across any OAR ORS that specifically requires reporting requirements. Although there are, there's some templates, we'll talk about that, there's a DAS template, I think section 14 talks about reporting and that kind of thing. So it's, it's really just, it's a, it's a template requirement. In B, it says, explain how legislation might impose requirements. Depending on the bill or budget note, we could have requirements given us, you know, on the general fund stuff by the legislature. And again, that would be, that would be managed programmatically, you know, and that would look different in a grant given to APD or Volk Rehab or Child Welfare Vice Public Health or Oregon State Hospital or whatever. We, so it would, it would vary greatly depending on what the purpose that the legislature wanted for, for that particular money, if it was general funds. Explain how you might use federal guidelines to impose, and what I've done there is I've just included in the notes for the, the task force to be able to reference just an example of, of, I think it's TANF or SNAP, that the, how the federal requirements apply through those programs. Okay, to what degree are reporting requirements negotiated with grantee or contractor? It's not always negotiated. Again, there may be opportunities, especially with the general fund money, to, to do that. And I would just say this, it's been my experience that our programs are very, very sensitive and very attuned to what, what our vendor community has, you know, with regards to resources and this kind of thing. So this has been something that has come up and in feedback regularly. So our programs are very sensitive to that. And the other part of it is, we need our vendor community to administer the services that we administer. So we don't want to overly burden our vendor community with reporting requirements that is going to dig into their, into their resources more than has to. So to what degree are they tailored to the capacity of the grantee or contract? It's going to be dependent upon, again, what we're looking to do. Is this, is this a short-term engagement? Is it, you know, something along the lines of Orem with disaster relief or something like that, which is one of our new, really, business sectors that's, that's opened up? Those typically are short-term, but if we have more long-term relationship in mind, how are we gonna, the question comes up between program and the vendor community, how are we going to monitor progress, goals, benchmarks, that kind of thing? So it depends, it totally depends on what's going on there. And that could, in our world, that could play out 100... And that could, in our world, that could play out 100, several hundred different ways. To what degree are they tailored based on the amount of funding allocated? This would depend on the services. We have many blanket contracts that are high-dollar residential, for instance, and the reporting would be the same. Some of our agreements, especially on the ODHS side, they're going to be the same, they're across the board. But that, that could, that should be taken into consideration whenever we're looking at engaging, especially in something that's new. When and how often do you require audits? Again, this is, you know, one point is always the $750,000 level on the federal monies. It's required annually. Section 14 titled Records Maintenance Access. These are on the DAS template. And this is a, you know, it's more, it's a reminder, it's a, it's a, it's a place where as you're drawing up the agreements, you can address this issue. Do you have any recommendations around reporting requirements to right-size the administrative burden while ensuring compliance? As much as we can and, and have the latitude, given the, the circumstance, we can tailor requirements and our frequency to funding levels and I would say add to that source. Our programs, they really drive this and they're, you know, again, they're held to the federal requirements. But anytime additional reporting is considered, it really should be weighed against a, agency benefit to the opportunity costs to our vendors of, of time that, and resources that they would have to use to, to make these requirements. What types of tools, training or templates do you offer grantees or contractors to clarify expectations and support consistency across grantees and contractors? Really, this comes down to one of our several hundred programs determining the language and the classes. Some, some of this is accomplished through statements of work that are very, very close or program descriptions that are very, very close. And, and that helps with the consistency and the, and, you know, makes it not as complex for folks that would be looking to apply in multiple areas. Our specialists, our writers are very involved in encouraging programs to, to communicate with the vendor community and to understand the nature of, of the communities we're working with. And this is really, we, we, and we also have outreach folks and community engagement folks. So we're doing outreach and a big part of the outreach, which was really facilitated in large part by Executive Order 2215, issued by Governor Brown back in '22. That outreach was needed in, in this area because the, the proposition really was in some of our historically disadvantaged groups, they're not in Oregon Byes or back then it was Orpen. And they may not be connected to the state in any other way. So we have to go out and we have to, we have to look for these groups. We have to look where they're meeting, their, their, you know, are the chambers of commerce that would be representative of, of, of the, of, of these organizations? So this, we, we look at this as a, a way to help facilitate the, you know, ultimate, hopefully the ultimate relationship that would, that would result from this outreach. And there's a lot of things that our outreach folks would offer such as, you know, assistance to free programs on how to, you know, use QuickBooks within, within the organization, the small organization. You know, writing proposals, that kind of thing. They can, many of these small business development centers, many of these organizations are available. A lot of times the vendor community doesn't know about it. So we really look at our outreach people being the nexus and the training and the aid and the connection to, to this, to this sort of relationship. Okay, what do you do with qualitative, quantitative and financial, financial and audit data that is collected? This is really programmatically answered and it would look different in, in all of our programs. There may be requirements there for some sort of consideration given a certain magnitude of, of, of achievement or and/or results. So there's, there's nothing centrally located that we have because of, quite frankly, the number of, of agreements and, and, and programs we're dealing with. So again, that would be programmatically, you know, we do report back on the financial data. And that's done somewhat in a centralized manner through the chief financial office. But again, that's done between the programs and, and the finance. For state-funded grants, the program may collect and centrally monitor data for internal use that's not published. So this is really for, and again, we do very few of state-funded. Do you do any internal analysis of that data? If yes, where is it? Again, that varies by program. And generally speaking, our programs have limited resources to conduct, you know, high-end analysis. I would say that probably the exception to that have been the CCO agreements. The CCO contracts are supported very, very heavily by the Actuarial Service Department. And so we have folks, high-end analytic types that, that would work on the, the health data there and the health informatics. So you have dashboards that show the data that are public accessible, publicly accessible, not to our aware of. We, again, we participate in, you know, obviously the data that is, you know, required for transparency, that kind of thing. But we're not aware of anything that would be public facing. Do you just collect what is required or do you add agency-specific requests for reporting? We add agency-specific data for reporting. We do, do that and that is part of the reporting process in this case. Do you, do you do any internal analysis of the data? This would be program-specific again. Questions?
So I know I have a few, but I think we also went over 10 minutes on this one, so.
So sorry.
No, it's totally fine. It was real, it was really good information. It's why produced a bunch of questions for me. I think I'll ask maybe one and then I'll, one or two, and then maybe I'll drop some in the chat for more of a deeper analysis. But so one of the things you mentioned was that there's about 500 contract administrators. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I believe in January, in your memo, DHS said they were managing about 2,500 contracts and grant agreements. So that would mean that each contractor is responsible for about five. Does that sound right?
It's, it's not evenly dispersed across our contract administrators. Some of them have, depending on the nature of the agreement and the complexity of the agreement. Some, if it's low complexity and, and low risk, in many cases you'll see having more than say 20 or 30 or even more agreements. In other cases, it's, it's, so it's not evenly dispersed across the 500. And yeah, yeah, that is, that's really something and it's something that we've have begun looking at much more closely. As far as we can tell, and this is probably more information than, than you want, but we, we've been digging into this. Back in the seventies, for goodness sakes, when DHS was stood up as a corollary of HHS at the federal level, there really was not commensurate, well, let me just say this, when they chose to begin contracting out services and having vendors working with the, the departments that were then, you know, existed in DHS. When they chose to contract out, they really became a contract administration business. However, there was not commensurate resources put into building infrastructure for business infrastructure type of activities. These contract administration duties were, were assigned to caseworkers. They were assigned to clinical, you know, nurses and practitioners and clinicians. And that is something that the organization has, has turned on. They're, they're looking at it much differently. We are looking at it differently today. So the issue of how many agreements they have is really part of the discussion these days. And I, I would just say that I'm very encouraged. I've worked in the, the federal and the private sector and I, and, and it's, it's a, it's a best practice to really understand what you're, you're asking people to do with regards to contract administration. Sorry for that long explanation, but that's the truth as I know it.
No, that was helpful. And I think it leads to a couple of the questions I'll put in, in the chat around like that kind of analyzing of data. Why is that not considered core work of contract administration? Especially if you're asking for more information than what's required. I'm just giving you a hint of the questions I'm going to throw in the chat, you know, or like, you know, did this question of like verifying services are being delivered? If reporting can pan out like 100 different ways, does that mean that people doing analogous work are providing different, different types of proof of service being provided? I'm just trying to kind of drill down that a little bit, but like I said, I'll put those questions in writing. And so they're a little bit easier to answer than just kind of where I'm currently scattered. But thank you so much for, for that information. If anyone else has additional follow-up questions, please do the like to DHS in the chat and then what your additional questions are on that. So thank you so much. And then next up we have OHA, Oregon Health Authority.
Hey, everyone. This is Melissa Hanks for the Oregon Health Authority. Let me share my screen here and then we will get started. All right. Hopefully everyone can see that, right? There we go. Okay. So let's talk about how grants and contracts reporting requirements work at the Oregon Health Authority. Some of this may sound familiar because we share an Office of Contracts and Procurement with the Oregon Department of Human Services. Sorry, lots of acronyms going on this morning. All right. So let's talk about the first question. How do you determine what reporting requirements will be included in a grant agreement or a contract? This is a collaborative effort between our Office of Contracts and Procurement and the program that takes place during the contract agreement and development. It's based on the statement of work or the program description requirements and in the development of payment methodologies. So our reporting requirements would be tied to where the money is coming from, how the payments are being made, what's going on in the program, and then anything that's required by OCMP. Identify any OAR or ORS that imposes requirements. That is determined by programmatic needs that are covered by different rules and statutes. And those are outlined in rules to be addressed in the statement of work or the program description. Legislation might impose several requirements for the Health Authority. Legislation might change statutes or create new ones. It might identify what's going to be required as part of the statement of work or the program description in both contracts and grants. New legislation requires specific reporting as a terms of the grant agreement. The state needs to consider that reporting increases administrative burden as well. And so that's something that we consider when we talk about who's going to do that work. And we don't have any uniform systems for report submission and monitoring for requirements at the state level. We also use federal guidelines to impose reporting requirements because we're the Health Authority. We do a lot of work with federal grants. The federal requirements are typically included in the notice of award that goes to the agency programs. It defines what the funds are to be used for. It sets the reporting requirements for federal guidelines. And there are also federal terms and conditions that we have to include and that often includes requirements for accounting and auditing reports. To what degree are reporting requirements negotiated with the grantee or the contractor? This is largely up to the discretion of the program. The proposed reporting frequency and overall reporting requirements are sometimes adjusted during the negotiation phase. Some programs don't negotiate the requirements at all. They have federal minimum requirements and they have to do that and that's all that they will do. Some of our programs have an extensive evaluation planning process that they do with their community partners. And that's in place and that may offer a lot of supports and adjustments for reporting requirements. The example that we have here, it's fantastic, is our Public Health Equity CBO Collaborative Fiscal Guidance Document. And I'll show it to you here in just a moment. But that is the document that helps explain in advance what this is going to look like for the vendor. And so it gives them more information about this negotiation period and what to expect from the Health Authority and from the funder. All right, decisions for the Public Health Equity Funding, for example. And let me show you this guidance document really quickly. There it is. All right. So this is the guidance document for the Public Health Equity Grant. And I'm just going to go over the table of content so you can kind of see here how much work that this program does with their grantees and contractors. They talk about their goals and objectives and allowable expenses. They talk about contracts and subcontracts, equipment, supplies and services, unallowable expenses. That's something that we need to talk to our grantees and contractors about in advance to make sure they understand what the limits are. Explaining how budget amendments and reallocation of funds works. Doing our expenditure requirements and reporting about unspent funds, other funds, and then the quarterly expenditure reporting. Everything having to do with payments and insurance requirements. This is quite a bit of work that we do in advance in this program. And I will pause very briefly because I think Dolly and Jordan are both in the meeting this morning. Dolly or Jordan, is there anything you'd like to add about the guidance document?
Hi, good morning, everyone. Dolly England, She Her Queen. I've dropped a link to the document in the chat. And I would just say that we edit this document often because things change and community helps us find where we had holes. And we're always working to make this document better.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Dolly. So i- in this example, the requirements here are informed by the recommendations of a 21-member CBO advisory group and the Modernization CBO Advisory Committee. We get consistent informal feedback from the funded CBOs through regular meetings. As a result of this planning, we have modified the frequency of activity reporting from every six months to every quarter. This is something that really helps folks keep up on their reporting because if they have to wait too long, they will forget and lose track and have to go back and start over again. This really helps them keep the information fresh and at the front and ready to go every quarter. We completed a nine-month evaluation planning process that included 32 CBOs and co-created a funding evaluation plan. I included key evaluation questions that were developed and prioritized by the CBOs that were going to receive the funding. It was also informed by questions that were asked on previous CBO activity reporting. Their upcoming evaluation for the 2025 fiscal year is going to prioritize another evaluation of the activity reporting process. For expenditure reporting, those reporting requirements are often not negotiated because they're determined by OHA state and federal requirements. We require the CBOs to submit a quarterly expenditure report that documents the work plan related expenses. We have expenditure reporting requirements that are the same across grantees regardless of the award amount. With the complexity of the reporting determined by the number of different funding sources and program elements. So example, for example, if a grantee is funded through multiple program elements, they have to submit separate expenditure reports for each area. So example, for example, if a grantee is funded through multiple program elements, they have to submit separate expenditure reports for each area. If they're funded through a federal grant, they may be asked for additional reports to help align with any grant specific reporting requirements. And to what degree are requirements tailored to the capacity of the grantee or the contractor? Every program has a negotiation step in their process and the degree really varies by program. The examples here range from flexing requirements if there are issues like consolidation and standardizing format, using feedback from grantees, as we talked about previously, to improve reporting requirements before each grant cycle starts, and then really prioritizing the grantees' capacity and trying to reduce reporting burden as a core value of our funding opportunities. And we strategically plan across opportunities to try to streamline and standardize reporting for them. To what degree are they tailored based on the amount of funding allocated? This really varies by program and funding source. Some reporting requirements may be standard to all of grantees because they receive the same funding amount from the same source or because of process improvements that reduce their administrative burden. We it's negotiated really based also on the risk associated with the grantees' performance and progress. And that's set up during the risk assessment and the grant agreement creation. And reporting requirements might be reduced in amount or detail for lower funding amounts. When and how often do you require audits? One compliance audit is required every two years under our delegated contract authority. Otherwise, it really varies by program. It's typically based on standard audit cadence that's set by the program. It can be more frequent when it's associated with external requirements like ARPA or FEMA funds. Okay, so these are our recommendations around reporting requirements to rightsize the administrative burden while we ensure compliance. We try to only collect what's required or only things that have a really clear connection to the partner's interests and needs instead of just collecting things that are interesting or nice to know. This is usually supported by the development of the activity reporting criteria. It's required by the funder, requested by a key partner, or it's needed for the legislature. The frequency should be no less than quarterly unless there's a risk or federal requirements that dictate more frequent reporting. We try to tailor them to the frequency of funding levels when possible, develop a set of common measures that can be asked regardless of the program areas for the funding opportunity just for consistency and reducing administrative burden, reducing potential confusion for vendors who have multiple different reports to do, and then responding to similar questions from multiple programs, trying to standardize report forms and consolidate reports that require the same information. And then really this, I should put this one at the top, adding data analysts to grant and contract admin teams to collect and distribute data. And maybe this is some insight into your previous question about why contract admins don't always do analysis. We data analysis can be really complex and we have to have really specific credentials sometimes to do those. And so the contract administrator often doesn't come from that background. Or we may have a team of contract administrators who could be supported by a single data analyst to help them with this information. What types of tools, training and templates do we offer grantees and contractors to clarify expectations and support consistency across the grantees and contractors? So there are two of these that I've listed here. One of them I really want to point out. The top one is training for our staff. And the training for our staff includes how we standardize the consistency across grantees and contractors. So first, we make sure that our staff has consistent standard information. Our contract administrators, they have training. They go through training for personal services and grant agreements, and that is in conjunction with trainings from DAS. Staff also have access to an array of tools to assist with scope of work development when that's taking place. There's also a grants resource form for staff that includes that helps guide the customer through questions to get to a really robust program description. And it includes reporting requirement and payment methodology information. Then we have trainings that are specifically for the grantees and contractors. The Public Health Division is a really great example of this. As we just saw, the fiscal guidance document that's provided to grantees. They include information about allowable and unallowable expenditures, timelines, reporting requirements, and guidance for submitting revised budgets and narratives. As far as dashboards, okay, so what do we do? Let's see. What do we do with qualitative quantitative fiscal and audit data that we collect? First of all, do we have dashboards that show the data that's publicly publicly accessible? At the agency level, the information that we gather from contracting and field based audits, they're really one off and they depend on risk assessment and audit committee priorities. So we do not have a dashboard that puts all of those things together. The communication of those results is internal to management. And additionally, because of the one time or infrequent nature, there may not be data or longitudinal data to compare across time. At the program level, those program evaluations are conducted and shared publicly. For federally funded grants, the programs publish that information that they collect from the grant recipients. For state funded grants, the program may collect and centrally monitor that data for internal use, but it's not necessarily published. The programs may support grantees with personalized dashboards that have dates and links to activity for their reporting. And that is for internally use as well. It's not published. One program is developing a public facing dashboard for both CBO and local public health authority activity for their reporting and other associated data. Do we just collect what's required? Do we add agency specific requests for reporting? The reporting requirements vary based on source. For federal funding, we might have different forms, subrecipient determinations, self assessments and monitoring plans. Those aren't publicly posted. They are available internally to folks with access rights and we retain them in the contract system. We also have state funding legislative requests that have different requirements. Governor's office might request that we collect data. We have program goals and strategies related to the funding opportunity that might consolidate the data into a central location. We also have key evaluation questions that are developed by the staff and the CBOs. That information is in the different programs. It's not necessarily in a central place across programs, but it may be gathered by program area if there are multiple different grants supporting one area. Do we do any internal analysis of the data? And yes, if yes, where is it stored? It really varies by program. It depends on our internal capacity and available resources to analyze and report data. There may be another division or program that's responsible for formal data collection. A contracts unit may collect forms and data and then post them externally as needed and really post them internally on a contracts management system as they need to as well. Program staff perform a limited analysis based on deliverable requirements. They may do just enough to keep going. Some programs don't even have this capacity or the resources yet, and they're addressing it by requesting the resources, first of all, and creating positions that will be hired to support the work, using external contractors to support data analysis and reporting. And we've attempted a cross program group of existing research analysts to support CBO activity reporting. This was largely unsuccessful because all the programs have competing priorities on individual time. And so it was really difficult to make that happen. All right, ready for your questions? Please go ahead.
Go ahead, Felicity.
My brain is so full. This is great, thank you. The something was mentioned, the Modernization CBO Advisory Committee. What is that? Please?
Hi, good afternoon. This is Dolly. I can take that question. So I'd like to just note that it was the Public Health Advisory Board or FAB had a work group that was the Modernization Funding Work Group. And in that work group, we worked in partnership with local public health and CBOs to draft what was our most recent request for grant applications. And so that was done with CBOs and local public health together. And that is how we came up with our most recent language. That work group is now done because we've completed the RFGA. But when we need to make decisions, we often bring CBOs and local public health together. And that recently came out of the Public Health Advisory Board and they've added CBOs to those advisories. So hopefully I answered your question.
I think so. Thank you, Dolly. And then real quick, you was mentioned during the presentation that kind of, I'm just quoting, regardless of award amount in terms of the reporting. I'm curious if the department has like a minimum grant amount.
This is Dolly. I can speak to the Public Health Division. We had said $50,000. And I'm telling you right now that that won't be the case in our next request for grant applications because community told us that was too much and that we shouldn't have any mini minimum because some organizations are just really small and may only need $10,000 or $5,000 for their project. And we were told that it's actually a barrier to have a minimum. And so we are likely not going to have a minimum in our next request for grant applications based on the feedback we've heard.
Thank you very much.
We'll do one more question. Go ahead, Helen. And then next up is the Higher Education Coordinating Commission.
Thanks. Just coming off of that answer, actually, I like the fact that you're trying to be that you're being responsive to community that have no minimum, but also a little bit worried about if the reporting requirements will stay the same for those $10,000 grants.
Yeah, great question, Helen. So typically what we do is once the organization has spent their funds, they aren't required to report anymore. So in my head, if they got a small award amount, they would do their first activity report and note that their activity is done or whatever. And then we would, we wouldn't make them keep reporting if they've spent their money and their project is done. So that's kind of how I would frame it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are any other questions, definitely remember to put them in the chat so we can get some responses in writing if needed. And Higher Education, you're up.
Hi, thank you. Good morning. Let me share my screen here. You know, kind of drive my own bus, as it were. So I'm Derek Disney, the procurement manager for the Higher Education Coordinating Commission. I prepared this slideshow for y'all. Let's see. So we're talking about reporting requirements. I will start out by saying that it kind of hit me as an epiphany as I was hearing others present that our approach, our agency's approach, and maybe others share this too, is that our agency is sometimes rarely just a vehicle to pass money to a particular grantee. And and that's because the legislature can't, to my knowledge, can't directly award funds for a very specific project to directly. They can't say in statute, you know, we want to give to this nonprofit. So or even public university, like University of Oregon, for example. So instead, the legislature uses HECC as a conduit. They'll say, you know, $1 million to HECC to award to Portland State University, University of Oregon for the Cybersecurity Center of Excellence. You know, newly created center. That new, I mean, that's a real example of what just happened. That is very rare that we see that by and large, what we see is an appropriation from the legislature to fund existing programs or new programs. And we interpret that as the the legislature entrusting our agency to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars and monitor the activities and report back to the legislature on how effective those existing programs or new programs are. And so that that's kind of our mindset going going into procurement's work and real our programs work as well. So what do we determine a reporting requirement based off of? Well, we do handle quite a large number of federal funds and federal funds come with strings. And those strings often have very specific reporting requirements, audit requirements, as I'm sure you all are painfully familiar with. So we, from the procurement side, we really look at the noticeable award or notice of funding opportunity. And we flow down any of those requirements. I believe one of my colleagues that presented earlier was referring to ARPA funds. Those that we got from DAS and doled out to grantees have very specific reporting requirements that the feds wanted. So the feds told DAS, DAS told us. We told our grantees and incorporated that as a reporting template into those grant agreements. And then we collect those, we pass them off to DAS. DAS in terms passes it off to the feds who requested it. So federal requirements are are there. State requirements are pretty rare, I think, as Kurt stated. State statutes or bills don't often have, don't often have reporting requirements, specific reporting requirements. But with that said, HECC will develop reporting requirements based on information we need and perceive that the legislature wants specific to that program or in a larger context. So we coordinate with Employment Department and Department of Education to really see the effectiveness of state investments into individuals and students, especially with like education. So we can, we can use data and coordination of effort to, while we're we're trying to. I don't know how successful this is yet, but we try to kind of track a student from K through 12 through higher education or trade schools and match that up with employment data to see, oh, if you get a degree in sociology, you know, this is your projected, you know, income, you know, if you get that versus if you decide to, you graduate high school, you get an electrician apprenticeship. This is how your income might be, might be affected by that. So we're able to to kind of analyze that data. And it's not a perfect system. That that integration on paper sounds nicer than the difficulty it is to actually combine systems with Department of Ed and Employment Department. But we're, I I think that is the overall goal in the future is to get that that alignment to be able to not big brother track anyone, but really to 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 be able to say these are, these programs are really effective. Or these ones are not, not so much. So we you know, especially with grant agreements, develop those reporting requirements of what we anticipate the legislature is going to ask us or may want to know in the future. Very often in all of our grant agreements, we'll say, you know, tell us how you've been using these funds. And also, you know, once you've used some of them, tell us how you intend to use the remaining funds. Sometimes grantees have to pivot. During COVID, you know, we, there was a, there was a large pivot from a lot of in person activities to pivoting to virtual, and that generated some cost savings and also maybe some unexpected costs. And so if they tell us that it may trigger an amendment to our agreements as well. We definitely want to know success stories. How are these, you know, funds being successfully used for individual Oregonians? We definitely solicit feedback on how how can we improve this program in the future? We also want to know, like, who who have you been serving? And this information is voluntary by the participants. They don't have to disclose, you know, their demographic, oh, sorry, their demographic data if they choose not to. So that is optional on the participant side, but we do ask our grantees to at least ask that question because it makes it easier to see the impact of these grant funds. Cover that statutes and OARs almost never include requirements for reporting. Occasionally they do, but very rarely. Almost all those reporting requirements for state funds are generated by our agency program on and very specific to that program and that grant and the purpose of it.
Derek?
Yeah.
I just want to, yeah, I just want to call it, you have about three minutes left.
Okay, I'll speed up. We don't, we don't really negotiate reporting requirements and and award amounts can vary. We do that because if we if we dial in, like, have a shorter amount of reporting elements that we get back from one grantee because they got a smaller amount versus a larger one, we'll have imperfect data. And it'll be less meaningful when we report it back to the legislature or, or others. I'll say about that. We require audits when, um, you know, programs do monitoring, the feds do require, um, the audits in certain circumstances and, um, we always preserve the right to inspect expense records. Um, we require our grantees to keep them for six years after the conclusion of the grant agreement. I don't really have any suggestions for, um, right size and administrative burden for, for that. Uh, I acknowledge, you know, the, if you get a small amount, like 10,000 bucks, and you have a very onerous list of reporting requirements, the, the juice may not be the squeeze, worth the squeeze for, for the grantee. And so there's always the option of not signing the agreement. And you can always ask to dial down the reporting requirements. I, I think that is very unlikely that our programs would be willing to do that simply because it would affect the integrity and robustness of the data that we, that we get through, through that reporting. Um, our administrators frequently hold training sessions for grantees. Um, on, you know, how, everything from completing invoices to reports. We also offer, well, on the front end for application submission to a grant opportunity. We provide consistently now translated documents and also technical assistance providers that we pay for that allow grantees to have an expert who has, you know, worked with HEC before in submitting grant, grant applications to really beef up their application to make the best version they can when submitting for a grant opportunity. Uh, we very frequently provide templates for invoices and reporting forms, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel. Um, well, like I said, we use the data, we do have data dashboards, and I put a link on this slide to it. There are some really good, um, data dashboards on there that I would encourage you to, to look at. See. That was it? Okay. Any questions?
Um, I'm actually going to ask folks to put questions if they do have them in the chat and keep us rolling. Um, thank you so much for that presentation. Um, Department of Education, you're up next.
Good morning, everyone. Chelsea seems to have access, so perfect. I will share my name again. I'm sure many of you know my face and voice by now. I'm Kai Turner. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of the Office of Finance and Information Technology at the Oregon Department of Education. I also want to echo the sentiments delivered by, uh, Teresa Wait this morning. I miss Stephanie. Um, and if she hears this, she can always come back to ODE. Uh, she was the first kind of face that I met, uh, right after I started almost three years ago. Sufficient reporting requirements. Next slide, please, Chelsea. So I benefit from my colleagues going before us and ultimately, uh, HEC and DELC and ODE have very similar processes in the education cluster. I just want to share that. So mine will likely be quick again. Typically for reporting requirements, uh, each program operates under the Oregon Revised Statute, uh, established by the state legislature. And this gives us the authority and allows us to carry out the, the objectives of the, uh, legislature. Uh, there are exceptions related to the federal funding, as many of my colleagues pointed out earlier. On, on occasion, we do, uh, further distill down the intent of the legislature by way of OARs, um, to add some robustness to, um, the reporting requirements. We also have our grant agreements, uh, in those templates, which offer the opportunities for our, uh, program partners to incorporate how they'll monitor that project, any of the outcomes, and any of the additional reporting requirements needed to fulfill any reporting obligations. These act as ways for us to collect, uh, information on monitoring and then, and then report back to the legislature. And inform how our funding works in the future. And you'll note that we are only allowed to request mandatory data, um, that is required for specific reporting purposes. Next slide, please, Chelsea. We do not, uh, negotiate with requirements. It is not a part of the negotiation process. Um, typically they align to the, uh, legislation, the funding source, or a specific deliverable. I will reiterate again that we largely work with, uh, school districts for our grants. Um, and direct funding to CBOs is a smaller book of business for ODE. Um, tailoring of reporting requirements is done by the program to essentially meet a requirement to monitor for compliance and evaluate for that, uh, desired outcome. Funding amount is not necessarily, um, a factor while tailor, tailoring those particular, um, reporting requirements. And I am also sorry that I'm a bit foggy today. Uh, I was traveling back to Oregon this morning. Next slide, please, audits. So the program can include language for site visits, desk audits, um, and anything else. We also do have to comply with the single audit requirement for entities receiving, um, seven hundred fifty thousand in federal funds a year. Next slide, please. Uh, we have a lot of recommendations for reporting requirements. Um, one that I just want to point your eyes to is particularly point two around scalable reporting requirements. I do understand that different entities in maturity, um, as an organization could be served better by having different levels of reporting requirements. Smaller CBOs that don't necessarily have the capacity might, uh, be better served, uh, by having, I don't want to use the term easier, but truncated, um, requirements that help them as they, um, are reporting back to us on the funding that they received by way of a grant. Um, this, as long as it doesn't impact, uh, particular requirements that are required by state statute or by federal law. What relative to, um, the program or the office, we need to revisit our existing reporting processes and try to identify or streamline, uh, to consolidate the types of reports. Um, and utilization of technology, uh, Teresa did mention earlier that they have the new awards management system that they are implementing. Um, ODE is implementing the similar system with the same vendor, but not in the same instance. So some of that might look the same for ODE. Um, we do share many of the same processes, uh, as our sister agency, DELC. Next slide, please. Tools, trainings, and templates. Uh, each grant agreement and contract requires the necessary information to fulfill that objective. The templates and uploads and entries are in smart sheets. I've also attached here a, a link for the additional resources that we have that are online. I will also share with you that, uh, as I started in the procurement director in the before times, uh, before my promotion, we did contemplate creating a position that was a procurement outreach and training coordinator. That position has been hired and in place. We are working on our internal, uh, training and development aspects for our program staff. And then that position will roll into, um, its secondary core duties, which is to go out to the community and explain how to work with ODE when it comes to grant making processes. I wanted to remove barriers, uh, for any entity seeking funding from ODE. And that was part of my plan while I was a procurement director. So that person is on board as we streamline those processes. Um, we will be, um, getting that person out and about in the community and meeting folks where they are. And I've put a particular emphasis on that position, doing it in non-traditional hours, simply because if you are a smaller CBO, you are doing your work during the day and likely can only get to some sort of technical assistance, um, after five, right? Um, or on a Saturday. So I want to meet people where they are with that particular role. Next slide. Uh, we also have our website where we do some dashboarding. Um, we will be, uh, updating some of our external dashboards over time. We are further bolstering our transparency, uh, from a grant perspective. Once we have our new grant management system in place, um, and we have it into production, I feel like there will be more opportunities for us to show data as it's collected out to the community. I don't have a particular timeline around that. Uh, it is heavily incumbent upon when we spin up the new instance of the grant management system, which we are in kickoff meetings with right now. Um, next slide, please. So that was short and sweet to the point. Um, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those right now in the moment.
Um, I just wanted to clarify the new grants management system you mentioned. You said it's the same one that DELC is also using? And it sounds like there's maybe a third agency that's also using that one?
So I don't, I can only speak to DELC. Um, DELC is in, I was part of the team to make sure that DELC as, as part of their launch had that financial aspect of, um, their grant management system in place. So in conversations with DELC, um, we were both doing the RFP at the same time. We prioritized DELC getting their system in place. First, we do have our legacy system called EGMS, which is the Electronic Grant Management System, which is homegrown internal to us. We will be shifting that over. I, I don't know what other agencies are using or doing, but I know that DELC and I share a similar platform or DELC and ODE.
Awesome. I wonder if the state agency representatives who are here, if you do know what system your agency is using, if you could just drop the name in the chat. Um, because I think I did lose, we've heard a couple of times, like, there are these systems. And I just want to see, maybe we can get like a little bit of a list, so we know how many agencies are maybe using the same vendor um, versus how many folks are, are, don't have an external, like, uh, haven't gone through this process of bringing on this new management system. But thank you so much for, um, for that presentation. And then next
Actually, I, I apologize. I see one question around, do other agencies have that position? Um, so, uh, when, and, and Teresa may be able to speak to this. So at the same time that I was contemplating, uh, outreach and training procurement coordinator, I was working with DELC. Um, and DELC established, I believe y'all established a similar position in your procurement shop as we did.
Um, Lori's also here. We did establish the position. Um, we have moved it to our equity, our social equity unit to try to, to fit more of the, of the community piece of that. But the answer, the brief answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. I, so I, I know that DELC and I have it essentially, or ODE. So hopefully that's helpful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'd be curious if other agencies have it, and I don't know if you can pop the job description in the chat just so I can learn more. So, but thank you.
All right. Next up, Housing and Community Services.
All right. Good morning, everybody. My name is Philip, and I am the Procurement and Business Operations Manager at Housing and Community Services. It is day twenty-nine for me, so I'm a fresh face, and, um, I kind of volunteered myself to give this presentation. So there won't be a lot of, uh, new information here. Uh, a lot of this might just sound, um, a little repetitive from the last presentations, but there's some new information. So allow me to start sharing my screen. And go ahead and let me know once you can see it.
Looks good.
Perfect. All right. Mercedes, how much time do I have? I want to be respectful of your time.
Uh, ten minutes.
Ten minutes. You got it. No problem. All right. So the first question that was posed here for us was how we determine what reporting requirements will be included in a grant agreement or a contract? And so as you've heard, um, it is largely dependent on the funding source. And so you'll see some acronyms sprinkled throughout our presentation. And just for your awareness, ARH is our affordable renting housing, uh, HOD is the homeownership division. You'll also see HSD in there somewhere. That's our housing stabilization division. And then PROC is just procurement, just a shorthand for that. So, um, so yeah, it's largely depend on the funding source. Um, some programs might have program level reporting and activity requirements, uh, that are often communicated via their program manuals and then are reiterated in the grant agreements that we do award. Um, if there is some sets of expense documentation requirements, those are typically driven by accounting for the fiscal compliance piece. From a procurement perspective, when it comes to the contractor grant agreement, um, again, it's in legislation. If it's in rules, it's typically pointing back to a program's program manual, um, like ARH or HOD. Uh, and so we will oftentimes defer to the contract administrator or our agency's grant manager within the program to determine any specific needs beyond legislation or budget notes. So from procurement, we want to make sure that we capture the minimum criteria for reporting. And if there's additional ones that we do need from a program side, we do work with our program divisions on that. Um, and it is possible for funding sources to have additional requirements. You know, just be on our program ones such as, uh, federal award requirements. Uh, if we get private funds from philanthropy, they might have specific things that they want to see in a report. And so in those instances, you might see reporting requirements that are beyond the usual that you might find at Housing and Community Services. Um, you know, programs sometimes look to tell a story of the work being done with grants. So, you know, if you've heard about the governor's executive order and her goal on building some affordable housing over the next 10 years, we might be looking to collect data to help tell that story with the governor's office, as we have been working, um, very closely with the governor's office on that goal. So going to the next slide is questions about, you know, general requirements in ORS or OARs. You know, the programs kind of agree with us that, you know, if it's not in the program manual, it's, it should be spelled in the RFA or RFP. So no recurring, you know, blanket reporting requirements should be in our OARs or in the, the statutes that apply to us. You know, there, if we have a specific legislation and particular budget notes that go along with, um, that, those fiscal legislations for us, there might be a reporting requirement that we, that we identify and want to capture, uh, as part of that grant program that we stand up. All right. So in terms of those legislatively imposed requirements on us, um, you know, housing and, uh, or affordable rental housing and the homeownership division. Again, legislation can create, um, you know, it, it might create a resource that would include a program level reporting schedule or some kind of other reporting requirement. And if it's in legislation, right, it's, and if it requires more or something to supplant a program level, uh, procedure or practice, then that can come into play as for those grants as well. If there's legislation that goes beyond what a program would require, then we would kind of say, okay, let's forget about the program level requirement. We're going to go ahead and report on to meet that legislative requirement. Um, sometimes they're explicit, right? So it's sometimes it's pretty clear to say, yeah, we need to have reporting for a 10-year period. And in those cases, that is at the discretion of the legislature and legislation passed. But if it doesn't require, you know, if it doesn't go to that length to require, say, 10 years or specific information, we're typically not going to expand on that. We, we usually do try to just keep it at minimum because, well, we don't want to burden our grantees, and we sometimes have to be honest with ourselves in saying, if we get that data, what are we going to do with it? Is it going to sit somewhere? Because it was just going to sit somewhere. We don't want to add, we don't want to spend the time and the resources to collect information we won't do anything with. And also it's, I, I, I think it would be important to note for us, it's, uh, you know, in terms of all the federal funds that we do get, it's, uh, from a subcontract perspective, those reporting requirements can flow through as well. And so sometimes it can get a little complex and messy to get all those reports from all the grantees and the sub-grantees. And so that's something to look out for, for us. So the, you know, using federal guidelines to impose reporting requirements, that's, you know, going to be the, one of the most common situations for us. Um, federal resource guidelines or requirements would supersede any state level policies, procedures, and practices if they do conflict. Or if the, if the feds went to see more information than we would require from, from the state side of program level, we're gonna go ahead and opt in for the federal requirements for reporting purposes. And yeah, federal awards, they can have award specific requirements for the reporting. We get a certain bucket of money. We need to make sure that we're reporting, um, for compliance purposes. When it comes to negotiating those reporting requirements with our contractors or grantees, not typically negotiated, right? When it comes to negotiating those reporting requirements with our contractors or grantees, not typically negotiated, right? Um, especially on a case by case basis due to the need for consistency, um, not just for us as an agency, but for our grantees as well. Um, you know, you kind of get into a hairy situation sometimes when you would require some reports of some, but not others. Uh, we do try to remain equitable, so we try to keep it consistent. Um, but if we did negotiate it, it would be something minor. It would be something such as, okay, well, let's say, let's say we need that, we need to have information by the end of the year and we wanted to do monthly reports, but maybe that's burdensome on the grantee. And so we might negotiate a quarterly report instead. Um, if we're asking for more information or for too much information, we might look to consolidate information into categories. Um, instead of trying to break out a lot of expenses, if we can, we might say, just tell us how much you expect on say services or, or goods, but other times, if a, if a warrant says that you can only have ten percent for a certain cost category, then we would want to capture that as well. So we can ensure that we're complying with all those requirements. Um, but yeah, by and large, they're, they're not negotiated. Um, they will sometimes be, and this comes to the next point, they are sometimes tailored to the capacity of the grantee. Again, that's more mostly about the frequency and cadence of the reporting. So yeah, uh, affordable rental housing and homeownership division, specific programs, you know, they might tailor those reporting requirements um for individual offerings. But again, generally it's not, they're not tailored to a great extent. And if it is at size and capacity, right, if at all. Um, so in terms of, hey, are they tailored based on amount of funding allocated? Um, yeah, from a program perspective, in the absence of funding or legislatively established requirements, programs might choose to adjust reporting requirements and features um of the offering that, that they can influence. Um, but if they can't influence because it's, you know, a compliance situation, then, then, you know, we can't really make that leeway. We can't negotiate or tailor those requirements. Um, but anything within our control, we, you know, we do try to keep it minimal. You know, procurement example is, yeah, as I, I talked to this just previously, if the funding requires budget to allocate specific amounts to certain costs, we would require reporting to ensure that compliance as an example. So, you know, when and how often do you require audits? Well, for federal audits, there are single audits are required. There's a link there for additional information. Um, also our grant agreements can have language in there about fiscal and program monitoring as it relates to the audits that, that kind of go along there. And um, some divisions, they're responsible for all audits and compliance reviews like H O D typically it's requested to do every two years, but staffing capacity can be an issue and well, we're, we're done, they're done when they're able to, to get it done. So do we have recommendations on right sizing reporting while ensuring compliance? So we, yeah, I mean, generally we strive to only collect information that we absolutely need for compliance purposes related to legislation or another award requirement such as those privately donated philanthropy funds. Um, or needs related to assess a pilot project or program. Sometime in legislation, we're asked to do a pilot project or program for a specified period of time. And those cases, those are cases where you might see more um reporting criteria um and requirements involved. Just so we can better assess the um, you know, what's gone well and what hasn't gone well and how we might be able to improve a program or project if it were to kind of extend beyond a pilot phase and go into a more long-term recurring phase. Um, or if we had to take any specific actions on it in order to um be able to enforce the terms of a grant agreement. So we shouldn't really be requesting information again, just to have it. Uh, if, if we're going to collect data and it's going to go somewhere that nobody looks at, we shouldn't be collecting that. And um, we want to keep it very minimum. Um, because it's not just a burden on our grantees, it's a burden on the agency to handle all that data. So we try to rightsize it, um, starting with us on our side as the grantor. Um, so we do recommend working directly with your agency grant manager to identify a method to rightsize your reporting administrative burden, right? Um, again, it kind of comes down to if, if, if the baseline is stated as monthly reports and perhaps it doesn't need to be monthly, perhaps that was, you know, a preference uh for the grant manager to get um more, you know, regular data fed, fed every month. You might say, hey, can this be quarterly? We don't really have the funds um or the, the capacity to, to meet that need. And there, there could be the, there could be an option to rightsize in those situations. Um, and additionally, you know, so we sometimes collect information, be able to show that we are meeting our statewide housing goals, as I mentioned previously, particularly data related to the equity and geographic distribution. Um, we like to let rural Oregon know that, that they are, you know, they're, they're in the front of our mind and that they're not going to get left behind as part of this um, these housing goals for the entire state. Cause it's not just the Willamette Valley, it's for Oregon as a whole.
Okay. So Philip, if you can wrap, wrap it up.
Oh, absolutely. Yep. So what types of tools do we use? Um, information sessions, uh, kickoffs, you know, we, we, we try to stay connected with the communities. You know, uh, we have some handbooks, there's program information online. There's a link here, happy to give that out as well after this presentation. Um, what do we do with all the data? Again, for reporting requirements for the effectiveness and planning, um, we want to ensure compliance with programs and legislation. And um, a lot of that data goes into a dashboard. You can see those dashboards, they're posted online. Here's a screenshot. It looks really nice. If you're a bar chart person, a line person or a bubble chart person, there's something there for you. Highly encouraged to check it out. Do you just collect what is required or do you add agency specific requests for reporting? Um, strive to only collect what's required per rule of legislation. Something comes up, it's possible. Talk to us, we'll rightsize it for you. Do you do any internal analysis of that data? Some programs might have a process for tracking the administration and compiling that for their program purposes such as Tableau, as you saw on a previous slide, can be on our website. And we're, we're currently conducting an assessment regarding data governance to change how our agency conducts internal analysis of the data collected. So that we do collect data is for specific purposes. Questions.
So you did have um, a question in the chat, but we'll send that to you for a written response.
Perfect. Happy to address it. Thank you for the time. I'm going to go off camera.
Um, all right. And then our last presentation is going to be the Oregon Youth Authority.
Good morning, everyone. Katie Hudson, uh, she/her, O I A's Chief Financial Officer. I know y'all are used to seeing me and hearing my most pleasant voice, but um, I'm going to invite my new procurement manager to present today. Uh, she will also be operating as my backup in case I'm uh not available to the task force. So go ahead and introduce yourself, Susanna, and uh kick us off.
Hi, thanks for having me, everybody. I'm Susanna Ramos at K D Sana. I'm O I A's procurement manager. And I thought I could walk you through our slides today and share some information. So, let's see. Everybody sees my screen, okay? I hope. So you asked us some questions about reporting requirements and for grants and contracts. So important thing about O I A is that we are a general funds grantor. So we're only issuing general fund grants. So our reporting requirements are different from federally funded grants. And because of that, our um, the programmatic reporting requirements are something our subject matter experts determine and the administrative reporting requirements are something that the procurement unit oversees and provides guidance on. So we're always carefully looking for um requirements that are in statute or recent legislation. We're tracking legislative changes to make sure that our programs are including those requirements. So every contract, every grant comes through the procurement unit, gets signed by the D P O. Uh, so the oversight for that and the checks and balances um make sure that the reporting requirements are standardized to the degree that they can, but also um that they are um streamlined where they can be as well. Moving on to the next slide, we've got uh this identify any O A Rs or O R Ss that impose requirements. Uh, the scope of work varies significantly for O I A's contracts and grants. And so any applicable administrative rules or statutes are really going to depend on the type of work. So what work is being done? The activity or the item the grant funds are being used for is what we're looking at to sort of guide uh what requirements are there. Um, we've shown the law triangle here, which is sort of really great graphic that DAS gave years ago to procurement folks. Um, just showing the hierarchy of, of what an agency looks at when we're determining the applicable laws and rules, the federals at the top, and then working its way down. And so we're just pointing out here where we've got the legislative level that are imposing uh statutes. So we might see legislature proposed statutes like prevailing wage for construction. We might have reporting requirements for that. So we might have companies that have to have certified payroll and the state's done a good job with that. So we'd include that in our contract language and make sure that's required. Contract administrators monitor that. At the agency policy level, we might see rules in the administrative rules. We might see those dictating a good example for us is our behavioral rehabilitation services, B R S. Um, those dictate the reporting requirements in our B R S contracts. So there's lots of things there. It really just varies, right? Those are just two good examples. So the reporting and negotiation, um, do we negotiate them at, at the programmatic level? Yes, we do. We likely would negotiate reporting requirements to tailor the time in our data collection efforts to the individual contractor or the grantee. And we do that because it is, um, we do have that flexibility to make sure it works for them. And that's ultimately our goal because we both need the reporting details, but we want to make the process easy for the grantees and contractors. And so it is about the administrative requirements or things required by statute. There's little to no room uh for negotiation. Those are sort of already dictated, but from a programmatic perspective, there's great um ability to have flexibility there. In fact, if a new programmatic reporting requirement is being introduced, then the programs are generally going to connect with those entities in advance or the new grantees or new contractors and talk about if it's viable, sort of try to plan for success. Like are these reporting data elements, something you're capturing and how long, if it's not, how long until you could get to the point where you could capture that data? We don't want to um burden folks and we want to give them as much time as we can. So always looking for that opportunity. And then from a procurement perspective, we would just build in that reporting language in the contract and then the contract administrator would manage that as the, as the grant or the contract progressed for the term. So audits and ensuring compliance, the question is, how often do you require audits? And sort of a familiar theme here, it really depends on the scope of the work. What are they doing? What are they buying? The audit requirements are dependent on those specifics. And that's pretty common for contracts and grants is that the scope of the work is going to dictate what requirements you have either for documentation that has to be provided or reporting in this case. Um, and so specific examples I'm thinking of, we've got them here as I T contracts. You know, they're going to require the SOC audits, right? They're going to require some very specific I T, very distinct sort of reporting and audit requirements. Um, and those are really complicated. And then you've got sort of the B R S, which is in, which is in rule and they require an audit every ninety days or ninety days after. So this financial audit is what we're really looking at there. So it's really dependent and there might be some other ones too. It really depends on the scope. We try to standardize where we can um and make the reporting simple. We include the reports and we talk a little bit about that on the next slide. So recommendations for right sizing, uh, we are all about this. O I um wants to get more feedback where we can about how to right size, but our own experience, I think lends itself to the recommendations that we've listed here. Um, which is the kickoff meetings, those are really powerful, having that initial connection when the grant or the contract is issued to be able to say, this is where we're at. Let's set the groundwork for success. There are so many questions that come up during those kickoff meetings that clarify reporting requirements um that otherwise could have led to all sorts of reporting mishaps or the wrong information, sort of rework needed, and we don't want that. So that baseline is super important. We love to do that. Uh, and then streamlining, standardizing, so creating reporting templates, forms designed for the contractor or grantee is so critical. We don't want to make more work for them. The whole idea is that the grant or contract is giving them an opportunity. Um, and if we make it difficult, then smaller businesses or individuals who are basically at their kitchen table doing this work, struggle with complex reporting forms. And so we try to standardize it, but also make it specific to the grant or the project because generic sized forms or templates are only helpful so far. So we're looking at that and we love feedback. So we are soliciting feedback from our grantees and contractors and ways to improve it. So where we can, we make those changes. Um, and then the grant or the contract administration, I think it's come up before. This is really the folks that are the most critical resource for the contractors and grantees. They're their first point of contact after the contract is executed. They are the likely the subject matter experts for that area. And they're the ones that would receive the reporting. And so just making sure that they, they have those grants administrators and contract administrators have the capacity to handle that workload, I think is really important. And there's work there definitely need to be done at the state level to sort of rightsize that. Um, moving on to numbers, tools and training and templates, um, examples of reporting documents uh filled out. We like to sort of give them a mockup, right? I think that's really helpful where you have like fake data that's in there because I think it's hard to conceptualize sometimes what exactly we're looking for. But if you can give them a mockup of an example or a redacted version, maybe that's something that works. We use that a lot. Instruction documents with screen captures, walking them through the reporting process and forums. We give a little demo. That's always really helpful, one-on-one or in a group. Sometimes folks are um receptive to the group sort of forum situation. But I will tell you that oftentimes um individuals at a smaller scale will struggle with that group trains and you'll lose people. So offering both the one-on-one and the group, I think is super important just because we all have different learning styles. Um, I think we talked about it. We don't really, O I doesn't have um the data collection. We don't have any external reporting. Um, we, any data that's collected from audits or reporting requirements is used just to inform agency decisions and respond to our own internal performance measures. Agency reporting requirements, et cetera. Just sort of refine our work and do better. But we don't have any external reporting. We're relatively new to the grant process. And so um, we don't have that yet, but we're excited about what everybody was showing. Really great work. So there's opportunities there. And that's all I have. I'll toss it back to Katie.
I have nothing to add. Great job, Susanna. And uh, we will await, await questions in the chat.
Yes, thank you so much. That was wonderful. And thank you, everybody, for your presentations today. Um, this was a great amount of information to kind of close this out as we jump into our next phase. Um, I'm gonna give us a, uh, how much, how much time? Um, like a seven minute break until eleven twenty-five. Um, and then when we come uh back, um, I'm gonna actually do our look ahead real quick first so that we can give our um full time um at the end to D O J for their presentation. So we'll take about five minutes or so. Um, maybe ten to do our little look ahead. We have a decision that we need to make. Um, and then we'll spend the last half hour, um, twenty-five minutes on the D O J presentation. So I will see you all back um at eleven twenty-five. Make sure to look away from the computer. Okay, welcome back, everybody. As you start to come back to your computer, if you could just give me a little thumbs up emoji or turn on your camera so I know who's here and I'm not talking to my lonesome. Thank you. All right. So as I mentioned, this is our last set of formal agency presentations, and we're going to be moving into our decision-making process. So in June, we're going to have a discussion just among the task force members about our mechanism for ongoing review. At our agenda planning meeting, we kind of determined this is really something for us to make a recommendation on. It's not necessarily something that we need the agencies to put input on. And actually throughout the presentations, we've gotten recommendations that I think actually feed this. So we can just pull those forward. We are going to be looking at formalizing a decision-making process in our charter. It is a majority vote for our final decisions. So it's more of like, how do we move our discussion forward so we can get to votes? I have a proposal for that that I'll talk about in June. If you have any kind of preferred processes that you like, that you want to let me know about, please feel free to send me just an email with your idea. We're also going to formalize some presentation prioritization of our final recommendations. So we want to make sure that when we're presenting those, we're also giving, you know, in response to the legislation, we're giving a sense of like, what do we feel is the most important adjustment or reform to make to help achieve greater wages? And what are kind of like the stair steps down from there? So in order to do this and try to make sure our conversations in those next two meetings or three meetings are really fruitful, we're proposing that we set up priority-setting subcommittees. So the priority-setting subcommittees, we would have a max of three people, three task force members and legislators, Representative Conrad and Campos. We're also inviting you to participate in this as well. For the agency staff, although you won't be invited to the subcommittee groups, if you do have additional recommendations around, you know, you've heard a lot from each other. You've shared a lot with us. If you want to share any additional recommendations, please feel free to send those to me via email. I have a proposed schedule here for a series of meetings. Amy is going to put together, or I think already did put together, a survey that we'll send out to the group where you can choose the meetings, the meeting you would, meetings or meetings you would like to attend. You only need to attend one and you don't need to be there for the whole meeting. So these are 90-minute windows. But if you're like, I can only be there for the first half hour, that's fine. Just come with your key priorities. Be ready to maximize the amount of time that you can bring to the subcommittee and then you can head off if you need to. Now, because of our decision-making process in the beginning, I can't just set up these committees. So I'm asking the permission of the group. So this is also part of a discussion. If you think there's a better way for us to be kind of setting up our prioritization, that's fine. I'd love to hear that. But this is an idea that we came up with in our agenda planning meeting on a way of us getting into some small group discussions where folks can have a lot of time. If you're that kind of person who likes to think through things like as you go to try to find your priorities, that's why there's 90 minutes here so we can allow for that kind of discussion in the small groups, as well as someone who might just need to drop in and be like, here are my three things, my have-to-haves, and I'm out, right? And then that way, when we come into the June, July, and August meetings, I already have a sense of where people's priorities are kind of consolidating around and we can kind of focus our discussions in that kind of priority order to help get us to the end. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the schedule and set up subcommittees of no more than three people per group. Does anybody have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, if you then can, we can do a vote in the chat. Yes, if you agree to setting up the subcommittees. No, if you don't like this idea and you would like us to consider a different idea. And these will be public meetings. I want to make sure folks hear that as they're voting. So these will be public meetings in the same way that this one is. All right, you all made that super easy. So we will be setting up the prioritization subcommittees. You'll get, as I mentioned, some outreach to determine which meeting you can attend. And I really look forward to getting into some smaller group discussions. Oh, look at that, the forum's already there in the chat. Thank you so much, Amy. So fast. So thank you all for that and for taking on one additional meeting to help us kind of get to our prioritization here at the end. And so that leaves us in with our last half hour. It's all you, DOJ, so come on up.
Good afternoon and good morning, everyone. Give us a minute here.
Good morning. Can folks see the slide deck I just tried to share?
I can see it, Sam.
Perfect.
Okay, let's start with introductions. My name's, and we'll tell you who we are and why we're here. My name's Renee Steinman. I am the Chief Counsel of the General Counsel Division. And the reason I'm here is that the General Counsel Division is the division of the Department of Justice that is responsible for doing the legal sufficiency review of the state's grants and contracts. We also provide the advice work and training and any other legal services around the state's contracting and grant work that our agencies need. And I'll have Sam introduce himself.
Sure, thanks, Renee. Sam Ziegler, I am a Senior Assistant Attorney General with the Tax and Finance Section. I was in private practice before joining the department. And among other things, I help my agency clients review their grant agreements.
And before we get into the meat of our presentation, I want to take a second and tell you a little bit in more detail why Sam's here. What he didn't say is he's one of our amazing Assistant Attorney Generals that conduct legal sufficiency review for the state. And he really understands the importance of moving grants along quickly. Sam has firsthand experience and knowledge of having worked directly with DAS through the COVID emergency and the recovery period. He has under his belt the experience of moving hundreds of millions of dollars through legal sufficiency approval and getting that money out to the state in grants in time to serve our state in that really, really important time of need. And so Sam's as good as it gets. And before we get into the meat of the presentation, I also want to give you an outline of what we're going to talk about today and to say that we've done our very best to address the questions presented by this body, either directly or in the context of the presentation. First, we're going to give you an outline of our staffing as it is relative to legal sufficiency review and our timeline for response. Next, we're going to talk a little bit about the general life cycle of a grant from an agency's perspective so that you can see more specifically. We're going to unpack a little bit more in detail where DOJ gets involved so that you understand that context. Then we'll move from there to talk more specifically about legal sufficiency review, the fact that it's required in most instances and why. We'll outline the controlling statutes and rules. And then we're going to go in detail about what legal sufficiency review is, the effect of not obtaining legal sufficiency review, and some opportunities for streamlining the experience of those legal sufficiency review. And we'll close by providing some response to the proposed recommendation that we were asked to consider. So, Sam, go ahead.
Sure, Renee, with that, why don't we pivot to general counsel staffing? How many grant reviewers does the DOJ have?
Sure. First of all, general counsel has about 130 Assistant Attorney General positions, not all of which are filled right now, but most are. Of those 74 are approved for legal sufficiency review. And that just means that more than half of our lawyers have been through the required training to make them eligible to provide the statutorily required approval for legal sufficiency. Our attorneys that do conduct legal sufficiency review are organized by section or by team or by body of work. Generally, in all of our sections, six different sections have attorneys that do legal sufficiency review and that work is sort of led in terms of quality control and workload organization by the Tax and Finance Team. Sam is a member of the Tax and Finance Team. And when we're organizing and assigning work, we look to group our lawyers into teams by subject matter or expertise or specific bodies of work so that we can have the most efficient use of our resources without having any of our lawyers sitting in and not having anything to do. Some of the questions that we got, got into the question of whether or not grant reviewers were different than contract reviewers or if there was a difference between nonprofits or not. And the answer is no. It is more likely that they'll be organized, like I said, by subject matter or expertise or body of work. And when we organize these teams, it is very important that our agencies communicate with us in advance of any major changes of needs and that they help us understand their priorities so we can make sure that we're meeting them where they need to be in terms of the work and the progress through the workload.
So with all that said, Renee, what is the average turnaround time for reviewing contracts and grant agreements?
Sure, thanks, Sam. That's the question from this body. And I will, I will say that that is a question that I can't answer with the limited data that we have. It's no secret that we are going through an upgrade in our technology in part so that we have a more robust data set to work with. As it is now, what we collect is the average turnaround time for our first substantive response. And that is what we report to the legislature as our, as our requirement to report with regard to our performance. This slide shows our reports to the legislature in this area for the last five years. And you'll see that on average, it takes us somewhere between four and a half and six and a half days to respond with our first substantive feedback or first substantive response when we receive a request for legal sufficiency review. And Sam, I thought maybe this would be a good time for you to explain, since you're one of the people that do this, what a first substantive response might look like? What are we doing at this point?
Sure. So that's, that's when, as an AAG who's been assigned a review of a grant agreement or contract or other contract, I have at least taken an initial look at it and have responded back to the client agency with, it might be questions about any aspect of the agreement. It could be input that I'm providing that's going to require further review and comment by my client. But in any event, it's providing some kind of feedback that's moving that ball forward, even if it's not the ultimate approval itself. Sometimes it is the approval itself. And so everything's done within that initial response. But other times, it's providing that feedback and if appropriate, asking any questions.
Thanks. And at this point, I'll explain that another reason why we don't report on or gather is our focus, the turnaround time for the whole approval is that at this point, once we've given our initial substantive response, it is not within DOJ's full control about how long the rest of this approval process will take. Because unless we got a fully intact, fully approvable document, which we do sometimes, then it will go back to the agency and sometimes back into negotiation even before it will come back, back to DOJ for the approval. Sam, one of the questions we got from this body was whether the amount of the funding in the agreement changes the timeline and what's your experience there?
The short answer is no, it generally doesn't. As we'll talk about shortly, there's a dollar threshold that triggers the requirement of legal sufficiency review. And so once, once an agreement passes that threshold, we have to conduct the legal sufficiency review and check certain boxes, regardless of the dollar amount involved in the agreement. Occasionally, of course, a larger dollar amount could mean more complexity and more nuance in the agreement, but not necessarily. So I would say as a general proposition, no, adding more zeros to the dollar amount is not going to increase the timeline for review.
Thank you, Sam. Let's take a look at the agency grant timeline. And before, Sam, you take this on, I just want to sort of confess that we borrowed this from our housing agency. OHCS has put together a timeline that they OHCS has put together a timeline that they use in their processes. And I think this is a very good example to sort of help unpack the process for folks that don't live this from the agency and DOJ standpoint. So Sam, can you explain what's going on in this slide?
Sure can. So again, this is a OHCS example. But what we're looking at here is essentially the life cycle. Actually, it's not the life cycle. It's the it's the beginnings of a grant agreement. How do we even get to an executed grant agreement with a grantee? And you can see that there are multiple steps in the process here. And and the amount of time that it takes to get from beginning to end, in other words, from sort of the gestation point of the grant agreement all the way to an executed document will depend in part on whether or not there's a request for grant applications or proposals in the process. So you can see we have a couple of different. Again, this is the housing example, but if there's going to be requests for grant proposals, you're looking at a 37-week work week process. If there's not one, 12 weeks. Because again, in that case, you wouldn't have the RFA process going out. This timeline here does show when there is a request for grant proposals, there will generally be a the creation of the documents in the first instance is going to be in the agency's bailiwick, right? So they will, our agency client will prepare the request for grant proposal. And usually with that, a draft grant agreement template, not always, but typically. So those documents will be created on the agency's end. The request for grant proposals will then go to, at that point, DOJ, and an attorney will be assigned. And then we will review and approve that with any necessary feedback, that application. Give it back to the agency. The agency will then issue it to receive applications, issue ultimately an attentive award after evaluating the applications, and then negotiate and finalize grant terms with individual awardees of the grant. At which point, then DOJ comes back into the picture to review and approve individual grant agreements. And you can see that each one, hopefully you can see it from where you where you sit on the screen. You know, each one of these boxes, if you will, or points in the timeline represent a different task that's happening respecting the grant. Most of these tasks are at the agency side, right? The agency's doing most of the heavy lifting in terms of moving moving it forward. DOJ comes in at a couple of different points, again, reviewing the the RFA if needed, and then ultimately at the end for the grant agreement. But in terms of the the sort of the outlay of time, the majority of that is going to be on the agency side. And in part will be driven by agency policy direction and other considerations.
Sam, one of the questions we got from this body in order to help us prepare was the question of whether or not we offer contract and review agreement, contract and review for agreements that are not required to be reviewed by the legal sufficiency laws. And what's your experience with that?
It's a good question. So I would say at the outset that the lion's share of our reviews are for agreements that require legal sufficiency review. We do on occasion get requests from our agency clients to review agreements that don't otherwise require that review and approval. And it's usually for good reason, right? A couple of examples would be if it's a if it's a new type of contract or a new program, something that's novel for the agency, even if the resulting agreement is not going to trigger legal sufficiency review. The agency may well, and this is this is a good thing, want us to have a set of DOJ eyes on the agreement to make sure that, you know, they're crossing Ts and dotting Is, right? Because even even for agreements that don't require review, we're still always concerned about risk to the state. Another example might be where the agreement is particularly technical in terms. And and there may be consequences, right? If the state doesn't adhere to the to the agreement's terms. And here I'm thinking about more sophisticated investment-type documents or banking documents for which there can be consequences, even if the dollar amount of the contract isn't particularly large. There nonetheless can be some risk involved with the agreement. So in that case, we will get a review request.
Some of the chat is reminding me that I forgot one of the points to make during the staffing slide. And so I want to go back. Sam, I'm sorry to disrupt things here, but one of the questions we got was whether what was a full team or what was what does it look like for DOJ to be fully staffed in this area? And what I'll say is that we have an opportunity to examine that every budget cycle. And we have in the last two biennia requested additional positions. We have positions that we are working on and we have filled and we have more positions we're continuing to fill to at the pace that we think is appropriate in light of the market and our needs and our clients' needs. And so I we have not, we do not anticipate making a request for additional funding or a position authority at this point. We feel like we're at a full staffing level now based on what we understand our clients' needs are and our own needs. And so to be clear, we are turning around our with our first initial response to our clients within less than a week. Our turnaround turnaround time is less than a week. If it is not an approval, it is because the document that we have gotten is not sufficient for approval and it needs additional input or additional work. And so to the extent on this slide, it shows 21 days, for example, which is just a rough estimate that OHCS has put together for their for their timelines. What I would say is that it is it is recognizing that there is often a need to go back and forth between DOJ and the agency and potentially the recipient to sort out answers to questions and to correct or adjust things as needed to accomplish the legal sufficiency review approval. It is it's common. And those that review time and that process would happen regardless of how many lawyers we have. So Sam, that kind of gets into the question of if we are providing these additional legal services is what's your experience in terms of? Some of the questions we got from this body, I think we're focused on whether or not our providing those additional legal services compete or take away from a legal sufficiency review of grants that this group is interested in. What's your experience there?
Yeah. So I mean, so what I would say is this, you know, anytime we get a request for advice or a contract review from a client, we're going to to triage that as a group, right? And so we are going to look at our priorities for individual clients. And we're going to manage those based on the fact that it's not just one person or group. Again, we actually have 74 reviewers across General Counsel. And so so we don't view it as a zero-sum game where, you know, the the none, the reviews that don't require actual legal sufficiency approval are competing with or taking away from those that do. What we're doing is managing the managing the requests as they come in and making sure that based on agency prerogatives and priorities, we're giving attention to every agency for every request that comes in the door. Recognizing the whole time, of course, that for those that require legal sufficiency review, and we'll touch on this momentarily, you know, they they have to be reviewed for legal sufficiency to be enforceable against the state. So we are sensitive to that. But but taken as a whole, we're we're always doing our level best to manage timelines and expectations and make sure that every client is getting served and that no one is getting sort of left out in the cold, if you will, because of some other non-legal sufficiency review contract comes in the door.
And I think Sam and Renee, I wonder if you could just speak a little bit to the a little bit more to the questions in the chat. So one of them was around the industry standards you mentioned like that week. Is that an internal standard that you have built over time as you're evaluating your work? Or are you doing like some peer comparison analysis? And then around the, you know, just I don't know if this will happen like later in your presentation about kind of what it is that you're reviewing for, since it seems like we've collected the templates from the agencies and they're mostly using the same templates. So trying to get a better understanding of what is it that you're looking for in those agreements?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. I there are our turnaround time is our turnaround time. It is a standard that is documented and we report to the legislature. It is it is a key performance measure that we have set by the legislature and I the the standard is not an industry standard. It is set by the legislature with us in, you know, in conjunction with the legislature. I'm not aware that there would be a comparison because I'm not aware that there would be, I mean, we do legal sufficiency review based on our state law and our state needs. And so perhaps that's an area that I should be more informed in, but I'm not aware of an industry standard. Other DOJ's don't do it the way we do it. And the approval timelines may or may not vary by agency or agreements. I don't have that data with me. And I don't I don't I think maybe if we're going to really, we will not make it through our presentation if we answer all the questions in the chat. So we can do one or the other. I think it'll be better since we already got questions to just move move through our presentation. And then if there are questions in the chat that maybe they can be compiled and sent to us and we can sort of sort out what to do with them later. If that would be appropriate for you.
Sure.
Go ahead. Okay, thank you. All right. So what I back to this question of the timeline and additional work and whether or not it competes with our ability. I would also add that we have great agency partners. Everybody on this, you know, that's here as an agency representative knows that they work really hard to sort of do the best that they can by their processes. And one of the things that they do is engage with us early and often, hopefully and usually. And the trick really here is how to make the most with the resources that we have and without having anything left, like lawyers left not doing work. And so what we trust them to do and we engage with them on often is to tell us in advance of when they expect significant changes in the needs. Otherwise, we've got a balance that's working fairly well with us right now, considering we've gotten a pretty big increase in our resources in the last couple of biennia. And will that always be the same? Maybe not, but that's where we're at right now. And we constantly invite our agencies if they have concerns about our ability to meet their needs to contact us. And that's true here, too. If our anybody here have any concerns, call me. So, Sam, I think we can move on to the next slide. Okay, Sam, now that we're going to focus a little bit more on legal sufficiency review, can you talk with the group about why do we even have this?
Sure. So I don't know if anyone on the agency side has has sort of general institutional memory of this, but our understanding is that back in the 90s, so some 30 years ago, there was a somewhat disastrous IT contract that our DMV had entered into. And this was before there was any legal sufficiency review requirement. And that particular experience prompted the legislature to to require going forward, legal sufficiency review for most public contracts. So that's kind of the origin story. In terms of why we why we do legal sufficiency review, which of course that story touches on at least a part of that, you know, from DOJ's standpoint and as a an Attorney General, Assistant Attorney General on the line, helping our agencies with these, you know, when it first comes in the door, you know, the question I ask myself is, you know, how can I help the agency achieve its its aims through this contract or grant agreement, as the case may be? And so, you know, we're trying to work with the agency to get to yes as quickly as possible. And so we do always review with that with that goal in mind. In terms of sort of the nuts and bolts of legal sufficiency review, I mean, what we're doing is, you know, the next question I ask myself is, does the agency have the authority to do what it's doing with this money or what it proposes to do? Usually not an issue, right? Usually that's pretty crystal clear from the legislation and the appropriation. Occasionally on the margins, there can be some questions and we'll talk through those contours of the authority. But that's a big one for us because we are talking about public funds, of course. We want to confirm compliance with applicable laws. That goes without saying, right? Whatever terms and conditions attached to those, the use of those funds. We want to make sure that those flow through in the agreement document. And then last, but certainly not least, and this goes back to the DMV IT story, we want to limit risk to the state. And so that will take different forms depending on the agreement. But generally speaking, that's going to involve establishing the agency's rights and remedies upon default. Often there'll be an indemnification clause. And in some cases, there'll be certain insurance requirements, depending on the nature of the agreement and what's being asked of the counterparty.
Thanks, Sam. And that's helpful. I'm going to ask you what I hear over and over again, now that we understand what legal sufficiency is and why we have it. Do we really, really, really have to do it?
Yeah, we we really do because it's state law. It's in the Oregon revised statutes. Again, this has been since the mid 90s, give or take. ORS 291045 broadly defines a public contract subject to legal sufficiency review. And in a nutshell, a public contract is a state agency providing or receiving good services or or property, which would include money. And hence, which includes things like grant agreements where we're providing money to grantees. ORS 291047 is the is the legal sufficiency review statute itself. And and again, does require the Attorney General to approve all public contracts over a minimum dollar threshold. Requires the Attorney General to promulgate rules to implement review requirements. And also allows the Attorney General to exempt by rule certain classes of contracts based on a risk analysis. So it's not optional. It's a policy choice made by the legislature. And we're doing this from a big picture standpoint, from DOJ's standpoint, to ensure that the contract meets certain minimum standards. And importantly, contracts that are subject to legal sufficiency review are not enforceable against the state until approved by DOJ. So in that sense, all parties to a transaction have an interest in ensuring that the contract is approved as required because that's the only way it's going to be enforceable by anyone.
Thanks, Sam. We've also been asked by this body to outline any applicable rules. So if you could do that for us, please.
Sure. So OAR Chapter 137, Division 45 sets out DOJ's rules for the review of public contracts. Obviously beyond the scope of this presentation to go through all of them. But that's where sort of the the more granular details are laid out for DOJ legal sufficiency review. Couple of things to take away from this presentation, though. Respecting those rules first is that the dollar threshold for the requirement of legal sufficiency review for all public contracts is any that exceed $250,000. Okay, so that's that's the magic number that has increased as of January 1 of this year. Before then, for the last several years before, it was $150,000. So now only if the contract or grant agreement exceeds $250,000, does it have to be reviewed for legal sufficiency. Grant agreements are public contracts. So when we said earlier on the prior slide that all public contracts must be reviewed for legal sufficiency, we mean grant agreements, too, because again, they are a state agency providing, in this case, usually dollars to another party that are public funds. And so OAR 1370450015, for those of you who are taking notes, prescribes the conditions for legal sufficiency approval. And we'll talk more about those in a moment.
Unfortunately, we are at noon. So I know that was a half hour that went pretty quickly. So I can give you a few minutes for last words, but I suspect folks are going to have to start rolling off the meeting.
I appreciate that. I'm sorry. I didn't expect questions sort of off the cuff. So what I think we can do here is maybe So what I think we can do here is maybe fast forward to, there is a slide, Sam, that has the legal sufficiency requirements. And if we could just touch on each of those. And before Sam goes into that, I think in response to questions about templates and why don't we just like stamp everything approved? Only some of these parts of the wheel are pre-baked in a template. And, and we'll talk about where you can maybe spend your time if you want to have quicker, easier legal sufficiency review. So Sam, can you maybe run us through this really quickly?
Yeah, just at a very high level, you're looking at here a pie chart of the eight elements that comprise legal sufficiency review pursuant to our rules. You know, and I won't touch on every single one. A number of them are fairly straightforward, right? It has to be written agreement. We don't do handshakes with the state. There needs to be a central contract term. So there's a binding contract. We touched on agency authority already. There has to be that authority and appropriation. We want to make sure within the four corners of any state or federal constitutional limitations. We want rights and remedies provided and the ability to terminate if appropriate in the agreement. And then, and then the one that down here in the bottom left corner, clear, complete statement of work or the project description, as it's often called in grant agreements. That is something that is not necessarily amenable to replication, right? In a template, because typically the project description is going to change from agreement to agreement. And so this is the one that we really, e- even if the agency has a pre-existing template that it's working from, that will check a lot of these other boxes. We're going to always be taking a close look at the statement of work or project description because that's really telling at the end of the day, in this case for the, for the grant context, what the grantee is supposed to do with these public funds. And so we talk about the three Cs. We want it to be clear, complete, and concrete. We want to see concrete deliverables. We don't want to see ambiguous language. And we want this to be a sort of a full description of what the grantee is supposed to do. And so if there's anything that when we think about in terms of our agency clients sort of facilitating our review of these agreements, it's really focusing on that slice of the pie, if you will, and really honing in on it and making sure that, you know, sometimes it's not enough to just cut and paste on a grant application and put it into the grant agreement, for example. I'm not saying that agencies do that, but, but it's a little bit more than that, right? To really kind of hone it, because now this is going to be a binding agreement between the parties, often for significant dollars. We just want to make sure that everybody's clear on expectations and what will happen with the agreement and the performance going forward.
So my, my hope is that we, you take away, if anything, from this presentation that legal sufficiency review is, is pretty basic and it's focused on having an enforceable contract that protects the, the state within the policy direction, you know, to the degree that's consistent with the policy direction of the agency. And I mentioned that because that, one of the things that we were asked about was what if this agency, what if this task force proposed a, a limit of say, three months on approvals for grants? And what I would say is that's a policy direction that we could work within. But what I hope you've seen is that our initial turnaround is within a week. And from there on, if there is work to be done because the template that we, the, because the product we have gotten is not ready to be approved at that point, then that is work that is being done by the agency with or without the, you know, grantees, depending on what the questions are, in order to get to a place where we can approve it. And that these eight things are, are relatively basic and not earth-shattering. They're just the basis of getting to a good contract agreement. And so if the idea is that there'll be a specific drop dead date set by the legislature, for example, for legal sufficiency review, and if it's not done by this day, then it's, then it's not going to be done. And it won't be approved. And that will limit our agency partners, and they can speak up on this, in their ability to explore options and opportunities with their grantees or prospective grantees in ways that they can get to approval. My point is, if there's not time, I think what we will see, there, if there is, if it is taking time, there is a reason. That reason is around these eight different components. And if there's not time to allow exploration of opportunities, then I think we will see more no's and disapprovals.
All right. Well, thank you all so much. Like I said, that 30 minutes did go by fast. This was a lot of information. So thank you so much for taking the time. We, I'm just, to share a reflection, I think, I wonder if one of the things we can do is, I heard you say that you can't copy and paste your scope of work that you built in your application into your contract. It seems like maybe we should find a way to make sure that the application is collecting the information that's necessary, that you can just copy and paste it. I think that would save everybody. Because it does feel like oftentimes we get to this point where like reinventing the wheel on how to say what we've already said, what we were already approved to do in the application that asked us what we were going to do. So what, so I, I, I really want to pull on that thread. I wonder if there's something there. But thank you so much for, for your time today. Thank you, everybody, for staying a few minutes over if you were able to. At the agenda planning meeting in June, we'll talk more about our decision-making process and how we start narrowing our priorities. I look forward to seeing you all in the priority setting subcommittees and hope everyone has a great day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.